Good evening, everyone. We call to order this Planning Commission meeting for October 17th, 2017. We have all seven Planning Commissioners in attendance for a full quorum. We welcome the public and our staff, and we hope that you feel welcome and included in this evening's meeting. We remind you to please turn off your cellphones, and when we do have the public hearings, you're welcome to come up and offer your opinions on the item that's being presented. This evening, the first item on the calendar is a consent item, the Minutes Approval from October 3rd, 2017. Commissioner Green?
I move to approve the minutes of October 3rd, 2017.
Commissioner Quinney?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Green and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Is there any discussion to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Our first public hearing this evening is Williamsburg Ranch Number One, continued from our October 3rd meeting. 2585 West, 9,000 South, Preliminary Site Plan, Preliminary Subdivision Plan, Preliminary Development Plan, and Conditional Use Permit for Assisted Living, R312 Zone. AIMTEC Group Mike Olson is the applicant. Are you here this evening? Please feel free to come forward and present your application.
My name is Mike Olson. This is a 4.7-acre site just west of the canal on 90th South. We sit between the canal and the Instacare on the corner there. What we've got planned here is four buildings that will house approximately 22 seniors per building. We have a management building that sits in the center of the project. That will have two management offices, a conference room, and a Pilates studio for the residents. One of the nice things about this site, and we've been, my company, been project managers on about five of these assisted living care centers in the last three or four years. It's very rare that we find that we can make a park work. Two things: one, we can buy ground that will accommodate a park, and number two, that we can have a residential, a resident park right next to a city park. That park there that you're seeing that sits between Building 3 and 4 and the canal is approximately about two and a half acres. The site will have a trail that goes from every building over to the park. The project is a single level, so we don't have to deal with elevators. Federal government is getting, changing some of the guidelines in regards to residents that are on a second story, in a second-story building, and whether or not they can get downstairs in the event of a fire. So that's one of the reasons we went to a one-story building. That, and the idea that we don't want to build a two-story building that looks out over the backyards of the neighbors along there. So, any questions that I could answer?
Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just in looking at the layout right now, it's showing that you have approximately 10 to 11 parking stalls for each of the buildings, and each of those buildings is a 24- or 20-unit building. I'm just curious if you're anticipating one car for each unit?
No. What we've done in these facilities is because these residents don't drive, and most of them are there with memory care issues, that the parking count that we have, we will have, each building will have two employees during the day and one at night, and we have found that the parking count is adequate for the number of patients that we have. This concept of a campus atmosphere is, in the industry, is called age-in-place. You could come there with maybe as assisted living, and then go to the next building where you have memory care issues. But we have found, at least the stuff that we've done the last several years, that the parking count works with the number of residents. Again, the biggest reason is, is because they don't drive.
Thank you. Commissioner Green?
I'm trying to remember back when we did the rezon for this. Do I recall that there was a, and I want to make sure that the plan has changed or hasn't changed, but the original, when we did this before, weren't you going to tie your stuff into the park next door? And have you, now that you've built the own park, you're not going to tie into this park at all?
No, we have a walkway that goes from the resident park to the city park, and it's controlled by an electronic gate.
Okay. That's the, that's, you already just answered my second question, so...
Yeah, and then the other issue too, we show here on the map that we have an access there to Leesaway, and our, what we've got there is a, that's a secondary access only for emergency services and fire, and that's gated 24 hours a day, seven days a week.
Any other questions for the applicant? Great, thank you. We'll reserve some time for you if anything comes up in the public comments section. And for the city staff, we have Mr. McCandless presenting.
Thank you. This requested, or at least the rezoning came before the Planning Commission some time ago, a couple of months ago, and so this is just a continuation of that effort. It was rezoned to an R112, or an R312 SHO, which is the Senior Housing Overlay District at that time, and this is just carrying forward that request or that development. The applicant is looking at Conditional Use Permit Approval, Preliminary Site Plan Approval, Preliminary Subdivision, and then also Approval of the Preliminary Development Plan this evening. We've gone through in the staff report and addressed each one of those issues separately, and then looking through the proposed site plan, we really don't see any issues with that at this time, and so our recommendation would be to approve those things as presented in the staff report, and with the recommendations that we've listed.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. McCandless? Commissioner Green?
So just for to clarify, and so the public understands, while though we're talking about a preliminary subdivision, we're actually consolidating property?
That is correct. We have two lots, or two parts, not two lots, but two parcels of land, and all they're doing is consolidating those. That's correct.
Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, let's open the public hearing on this item. If you've come to speak this evening, please feel welcome and invited to come forward. You'll have three minutes speaking for yourself, or if you're representing a group, you have up to five minutes. And if you could please state your name and address for the public record, we'd appreciate that. Thank you.
I'm James Romero, 2222 West Williamsburg Circle. And what I can see, even though he says there's these amount of units that are going to be there, you should still be, you should still have at least one parking space for each one of these units, because even though these people aren't driving, but there's always going to be somebody that's going to be taking care of them, somebody's going to be coming over to give them some kind of assistance. So, yeah, I think that each one of the units should have at least one parking space, because it's going to create a problem for congestion for them on down the road if you don't address that issue. That's all I got to say.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. We'll definitely address that. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
My name is Plant Warby. I live at 9121 South Lees Avenue. We have, at least our neighborhood in Brown's Meadow, we have really no objections to this. They've already discussed about the gate, the emergency gate, and electronic gate getting into the park. I guess what I'm concerned about is there's more and more of these retirement assisted living centers popping up all over the place. Is there somewhere in West Jordan's planning, dealing with the creation of these units, and how many can West Jordan handle? Because I'm sure as time goes on, there will be more and more of these as the developers want to put these in place. I'm just wondering, does West Jordan have something that they have considered and some pre-advanced knowledge as to what's going to happen?
Thank you, Mr. Warby. We'll definitely address that.
Okay. Thank you.
Our pleasure. Thank you, sir. Would anyone else like to speak on this item? Seeing no further comment, we'll close the public hearing section, and let's take it back to, I'd like to ask city staff, so that we address Mr. Romero and Mr. Warby's concerns, parking spaces. Thank you, Mr. McCandless, for speaking toward that. Could you please give us a little more clarity as to what the current city code mandates with regard to retirement center parking, and also how many retirement centers we can have within a certain radius?
Yeah. As far as the number of these types of facilities, there's no cap on them. It's all regulated according to zoning and market demand. In terms of the number of spaces, we calculated that out. It's 54 spaces are required, and we, there's, they provide, I mean, 52 spaces are required, and then they provided 54, so they meet the minimum requirements of the zoning code.
Okay. So it's an open, free-market economy, no cap, as Mr. Warby was inquiring on how many retirement centers, and then for parking spaces, it meets the current ordinance. I know with my, my mom lives in a retirement center, and I understand the concern Mr. Romero has, there's not necessarily a designated spot where I can go park. She has her own reserved parking space, but it makes it difficult for me to be able to park, and sometimes I'm parking in some other residence parking space where I've never seen a car there, so hopefully I'm not infringing. So, does anybody on the Planning Commission have anything that they'd like to say relative to that? Commissioner Hanson?
No, it's not relative to that. I'm wondering about the fence. It says they're going to have the six concrete biller and black steel fence. Are we talking wrought iron? Yeah, but I want to make sure that's what we were talking about.
On the overhead and on the, on the site plan, on the west side of the, the south side of the property is already an existing block wall. On the west side of the property, they're proposing a six-foot concrete wall, and that's showing up here. And then they are looking at doing some wrought iron fencing, but that's going to be around the south side of the, I believe it's the south side of the park area, the triangular area, and then along the canal as well.
Yeah, they had just said black steel fence, and I had seen the picture, but I wanted to make sure that's what it was, was the wrought iron.
Oh, I'm sorry, there is a chain link fence along that, the north side of the park.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Green?
I just wanted to also address Mr. Warby's comment that, as Mr. McCandless said, there's no restriction on these type of developments in the city, and one of the reasons why is because senior housing tends to fall in a protected class, along with low income. If you recall, a couple of years ago, the city council put a cap and grade on any high-density, multifamily unit developments, and had to change that ordinance because of the issues with low income and senior development. So, your concern's valid, and we understand that. We pay attention to those kind of things, but, yeah, you'll probably see more built in West Jordan City.
Commissioner Luthy?
I'd like to speak to what Mr. Hanson just mentioned. I noticed that there is the wrought iron fence along the canal, but then it goes to an existing chain link. Is there any way we could get that to be more consistent and have that be wrought iron that wraps all the way around so that it looks clean and new and not, now we're coming to the aging part of the area? That's just my comment.
Great, thank you. And then to further address parking space, because this is a, well, the four recommendations that we need to make, that would be for approval, it's not recommending to the city council, correct? So, because the current ordinance stipulates a certain amount of parking spaces, and it meets that requirement, we, not to pass the buck, but we don't have any authority to mandate that there be additional parking spaces over and above that which is in city code, even as I mentioned, when I can't park to go see my mom sometimes. So, we do have quarterly meetings with the city council, and I will definitely put this down as an item to mention to them, for them to take a look at, and of course, you're welcome to go to city council meetings and voice any concern that you have to the city council, although this item will not be before them at a future date. Thank you. Mr. Olson, would you like to have any time to address anything that was brought up in the public comments section?
One comment about the steel fence. We would prefer to put the steel fence even where the chain link is and get rid of the chain link fence. So, one of the things, just about growth in the industry, the last report that I saw that came out three or four months ago, there is right now in Utah, 30,000 diagnosed patients with memory care issues, and that'll grow to 50,000 by 2025. It's the largest growth in the industry. So, you will see more of these. Unfortunately, some of us are going to end up there. So, I think that you're going to see the biggest growth in memory care, which means that one of the things the federal government is allowing to happen now is they'll have ankle bracelets on that control all the doors. You've seen probably in the newspaper the last couple of months about some patients that walk away, and they can't find them, and then they end up either passing away or getting hit. So, this is, one of the site, the reasons we like this site is also it's close proximity to the emergency care on the corner. So, if I can answer any more questions?
Thank you for your idea to get rid of the chain link fence. That would be greatly appreciated. A question, please, Mr. Olson, by Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just quickly, on that steel fence, would you then be comfortable for us to add that as a stipulation of the condition? Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Great, let's bring it back to the Commissioner, Mr. McCandless.
Oh, just one thing, if you do make that a condition of approval, we'd just like to see that, or make sure that they coordinate that with the Parks Department. I'm sure we have to meet certain standards.
Great, thank you. All right, deliberation by the commission leading to a possible motion. Commissioner Sikoski?
Well, seeing that there's really no discussion on this, I'll go ahead and make a motion. If I can get back to the top. Based on the findings set forth in the staff report, I move that the Planning Commission approve the Conditional Use Permit, Preliminary Site Plan, Preliminary Subdivision, and Preliminary Development Plan for Williamsburg Ranch Number One Assisted Living Facility located at 2585 West 90th South in the R312 SHO Zone, with the conditions listed on Page Two of the staff report, with the additional condition that the steel fence will continue around the entire perimeter of the property, and that the builder will meet with the Parks Department and make sure that all of the fence meets the Parks Code.
Commissioner Luthy?
I want a second now, but I don't know that we can say the entire perimeter of the property, because some of that's going to be that concrete panels, so I think we just need to say there can be no chain link along the edge, and that it needs to either be the wrought iron or the concrete. Either will be great.
Does that work for you, Commissioner Sikoski? Great?
That works for me.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski, a second by Commissioner Luthy, with somewhat of an amendment that's now been accepted by Commissioner Sikoski. Do you want to reapprove the second?
Reapprove.
All right, great. Any discussion to the motion, to the amended motion? All in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Bringing us to item number three on the agenda, Williamsburg Ranch Number Two, Rezone and Land Use Map Amendment. 9,000 South, 2,200 West, General Plan Land Use Map Amendment for approximately 7.95 acres identified on the land use map as neighborhood commercial, medium-density residential, and professional office. Two, professional office and rezone from PO Professional Office, SC1 Neighborhood Shopping Center, and RE.5G Residential State Half-Acre Minimum Lots Zone, to PO SHO Professional Office, Senior Housing Overlay Zone. AIMTEC Group, Mike Olson is again the applicant. Would you like to come forward and address this item?
Okay, this takes the property on the east side of the canal and goes to almost the corner. We've left about two acres on that corner. One of the things you don't see here in Utah, and you don't see, I'm not aware of anyone, anywhere in the country, is where you take memory care patients and it becomes a research. So we left that two-acre parcel on the corner out of the facility in hopes that we could, maybe down the road, have an office building there where we'd have medical personnel that could actually do research on the memory care patients. See these firms, these biomedical companies starting to sprout up in the Silicon Valley? And so, that was our idea of leaving that corner off, but this adds seven more buildings and another large, when we bring the site plan back, and then a large clubhouse management center that sits there between Building 2 and 6, it looks like. Any questions?
Questions for the applicant?
And we do get another park there.
Any plans for the pumpkin patch?
Well, we'll try and stay out of their way.
Commissioner Luthy?
What are we looking at for fencing on this one?
Black iron along the canal and along the south side of the park, and then concrete along the school. I think this school's got a black chain link fence, or if I'm not mistaken. We'd probably put a solid concrete fence there, and then a concrete fence along 90th South.
Great, thank you, sir. Mr. McCandless?
Thank you. I'm going to roll back to the Future Land Use Map of the general plan. This is what it looks like now, the area that's, that we're looking at tonight is just the area, it's in the heavy red. The area that's, that's kind of on the northeast, or the northwest side is already designated on the Future Land Use Map as professional office, and then on the east side of the property, it's designated as neighborhood commercial and is zoned SC1. Just on the south side, there's a little area just west of Hawthorne Academy that's designated on the Future Land Use Map as medium-density residential. So, really, what they're asking for tonight is, is to change the Future Land Use Map to reflect their requested rezoning to professional office. So, really, we'd just change that whole area to professional office. In looking at the adjoining uses across the street, there's a golf course, the south's Hawthorne Academy. Further to the south, there's an area that's zoned RE.5G, just larger residential lots. We think that this makes, the professional office designation in the, on the Future Land Use Map, as we note in your staff report, is kind of geared towards being a transition between other types of uses, and, or your heavier uses, and your lower-density residential. In this case, you've got a school between the residences and the, I think changing this professional office would add an extra layer of, an extra layer of buffering between those residences to the south and then the, and 90th South, which is a major arterial street. So we think that it's a good fit. It'll match the use, the intended use of the property that's just on the west side of the canal. We really don't see any concerns with changing the Future Land Use Map or rezoning the property to professional offices being requested. So, it's professional office with the senior housing overlay as part of that, so just want to make sure that was included in the motion if you approve it tonight. So, again, that's our recommendation. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Mr. McCandless. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, let's open this item to public comment. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please feel welcome and invited to come forward.
It's me again.
Mr. Romero, good to see you again.
Hey, I see you guys. I'm glad I'm here, Jim.
Long time no see.
Now, listen, I want to know, do you have any other entrances and exits into 90th, or are you going to try to use the entrances just into 22? Has any of you seen the traffic there going into 2200 West? So, is there going to be an entrance and an exit going up, you know, up towards 90th, or are you trying to funnel everybody into 22?
Great.
Because right now, as it is, it's a disaster for all the traffic that's going, you know, especially if anybody's been there between 7 o'clock and 9 o'clock in the morning, or 2:30 and 4 o'clock in the afternoon, it's just impossible, and it's just, for accidents to wait to happen. And we see a lot of accidents right there on 90th. So, there should be another exit and entrance somewhere else besides just 22.
Thank you, Mr. Romero. Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
Carol Cool, I live at 9095 South, 2,200 West, across the street from the school. And I second what Mr. Romero said. I too am concerned about the entrance and exits. When you realize that you have children there at that intersection, and they're using all four possible corners, you've got Westvale and Hawthorne, and in the morning then you're getting also kids coming down from the church, from the seminary. It's just at all hours, and it's not, you think, well, there's a crossing guard there. It's okay, but the children, all of them don't use, they don't pull their cars into the parking lot at the school so that they can be picked up. They're walking down the street a block in any direction because their parents don't want to go through the parking regimen, and so it is just like ants. They're just everywhere at any given time. So, something other than 22. I was wondering what the possibility is. Have they considered opening Williamsburg, is it Cork, up at the other end? But then again, that's just, it still comes out on 2200 if they try to do that. So, I second that, and I also was concerned, this gentleman that's applied for the conditional use, says he's just going to leave that area on the corner and hoping that they can get a building of some kind. We are so tired of the dog and pony show that is on that corner constantly. They go from one thing to another, and again, it's parking and people pulling out from that parking lot. It is not safe for the children at any time. It goes from Christmas tree lots, then you've got the fireworks for New Years, then in the summer, you've got the fruit things, and then in the fall, you've got the pumpkins, and it just goes from one thing to another. We have spotlights when they do the fireworks, and then we have a Fourth of July, too. So you've got fireworks, you've got lights then, you've got all of the traffic. We have a, anytime they have the fruit stands and stuff, they've got that big semi-truck there. I cannot open a window all summer long because it sounds like somebody's revving a Harley in my driveway because of that refrigerated truck running all the time. So I would be thrilled to death if they would do something on that corner and not wait for another five or 10 years. It's beyond a joke, and it's really, just takes down the neighborhood, and the traffic... And the traffic is bad enough without this continual process that's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Poole. Would anyone else like to speak? We'll close the public comment section, and let's bring it back to, we can ask the staff for clarifications, but I first see that Commissioner Green has a comment.
So, so just so that everybody is clear, what we're doing tonight is we're looking at the rezone for this particular piece of property. Any, any concept plans, this, anything like that would act, to be considered, would actually come back for conditional use permits, preliminary site plans, subdivisions, all those things that we did on the property on the west side of the canal just a few minutes ago. So I just want to make sure that everybody's clear that that's what we're doing, and on the, and the piece of the, and the piece on the corner is actually outside the action of the council or the commission tonight because that's not part of the rezone. We're looking at rezoning this for, for the professional office with the senior housing overlay. So I just wanted to make that particular clarification. That being said, and then I'll probably be done on this particular item. But that being said, the only thing that Mr. Olson said that concerned me, that I, that I would like you to take a look at, is you said you'd probably look at putting a cement wall or some sort of brick wall all the way down 90th on the back, on the 90th side of that. And from, as you look at the concept plan and coming back for preliminary development and those kind of things, assuming that this gets approved here in a few minutes, I'd like you to take a look at a different kind of, that, look at the fence, because that's a, that's a long stretch of road that it had a long cement fence, and I think that would not be very conducive to 90th South right there. But that's my comment and, and clarification for the citizenry.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My question is for staff. 90th South right there, that's a UDOT controlled road, am I correct?
Yes.
Okay, so just for clarification for the citizenry as well, when it's a UDOT road, we don't necessarily have a whole lot of control over the inlets and outlets that, that were allowed. We can submit to UDOT to, to have an inlet or an outlet put on that road, but it's not actually up to the city whether a light goes in or whether inlets or outlets are allowed. So that's something that would be submitted, and, you know, it's up to UDOT really what happens there. So just for clarification purposes.
Thank you, Commissioner Sikoski. Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just one more thing in clarification mode. Looking at this myself, I don't see any entrances onto 22nd. Looks like everything is going to 90th, so there is not any additional entrances onto 22nd. So I know that that was your big concern. If anything, by putting this with a professional office here that may go with this, that eliminates all of those concerns you had with the multiple people coming in and out at the different events. But none of this has anything to do with any kind of an outlet onto 22nd because this parcel now doesn't even front 22nd. It's just 90th. It's now landlocked because of that other section. So that's all I was going to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Luthy. Mr. McCandless, do you have anything else that you'd like to add?
No, Commissioners Green and Luthy said what I was going to say.
Great, thank you. Mr. Olson, is there anything?
I talk to you all the time.
Mr. Olson, is there anything that you would like to say to address anything that Ms. Poole or Mr. Romero offered in public comment?
No, I think we addressed the 2200 West access, and I don't have anything on 22nd.
Okay. If that didn't get picked up on the, on the microphone, Mr. Olson said he has no further comment. Thank you. Commissioner Hanson?
Yes, I have a question for the applicant. Have you made application to UDOT to see if you can have any access or regress onto 90th?
We'll do that before we come back with our primary site plan.
Okay, thank you.
Did you get that, Ms. Davis? Thank you very much. As always, you're on the ball, typing faster than I can speak. So thank you for the comments, and yes, we, we hope that we're addressing everything. If I weren't up here, I wouldn't understand everything either in the parts where this comes back. So what happens, different from the first public hearing where we were the final say, on this item, we are a recommending body to city council. So this goes before city council. So if you have concerns, you're, you're welcome to go to city council. And if you want to discuss decibels of trucks or anything else, you know, you're welcome to mention that to city council. Again, that would be out of our purview and outside the scope of what's being addressed tonight, but we do appreciate your input and concern. Commissioner Green?
Unless there's any more discussion, I'm going to go with, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to city council to rezon approximately 7.95 acres of property located approximately 9090 South, 2,200 West, from PO professional office SC1 and RE.5G to PO with the senior housing overlay district, and amend the general plan, the general future land use map from neighborhood commercial and medium-density residential to professional office. I, I said senior housing overlay.
Very good. Commissioner Luthy?
Second.
That was a mouthful. Any discussion in the motion? I'd like to mention something Commissioner Sikoski asked. We didn't officially bring it back to the commission for discussion, so if there's any more discussion, we, we don't want any commissioner to feel like he or she doesn't have the opportunity to speak, especially during this discussion time of the motion. Seeing no further discussion, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously seven to zero. Thank you for doing business in West Jordan, Mr. Olson. Next item on the agenda is Wood Farms Rezone and Land Use Map Amendment. 4652 West, 7800 South, General Plan Land Use Map Amendment for 5.27 acres from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential and rezone from A20 agricultural 20-acre lots zone to R18E, single-family residential 8,000-square-foot minimum lots zone. Bowler Properties LC is the applicant. Is Mr. Bowler present this evening? Please come forward, sir, and present your application.
Randy Bowler, 6663 South, 2,200 West, West Jordan. Pleased to be here tonight. We're looking at doing a development on this property and the property to the north. So we submitted this rezon application to make it all consistent zoning with the zoning that's in place to the north. So I would just entertain any questions you might have at this point.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Bowler from the commission? Nothing present. We'll, we'll give you some time.
Sure, we'll be back. Thank you.
If there's anything that you'd like to address after public comment.
Just make your questions easy, if you would.
We'll try our best.
Thank you.
We'll make a multiple choice. Okay, Mr. Gardner, you have this item for the city.
And so as you have said, Mr. Bowler said he has a 5.2-acre parcel of property owned by the Elders Church, highlighted on the screen under contract. Right now, it's zoned A20, so agricultural 20-acre lots, and it's on the land use map as a neighborhood commercial. So he has applied to have the land use map amended to medium-density residential, which would match everything to the north residential-wise, and to rezon the property to R18E, has been said. You can see the, what is surrounding the site. It's kind of dark up here, but right across the railroad tracks is a UDOT facility, a salt storage yard where they bring trucks in and plows, and that's how they service 78 South and I believe 90th, all the UDOT roads in the area. And then just to the north of that facility is a Utah Air National Guard office and training facility. And then to the north, of course, is the piece of property that the city surplused over a year ago, and it was rezoned actually last August, R18E. And so the, the portion I've got in the oval is the actual, the portion that is under consideration for the land use and zone change tonight. It's connected to the, the overall larger plot of Woods Farm. And so of course, when you get to the next application or the next, yes, the next application, it would be, this portion of the subdivision would be contingent upon the approval of this land use map and the zone change before, by the city council. And you can see most of this, a large portion of the 5.2 acres will be maintained or will become a retention pond for storm drainage for the, the overall 29-acre project to the north and media adjacent to that. Staff feels that this application meets all the criteria for both the land use map and the zone change, and recommends that the planning commission forward this with a positive recommendation to the city council.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. Any questions for staff? Seeing none, we'll open up the portion of the meeting for public comment. If anyone would like to speak on this item, please feel welcome to come forward. The first person that we have would be Stephen Hunt. If we could please start with him. Are you, Mr. Hunt?
I am.
Great.
I am speaking for a small group. If I could request the two extra minutes, please. And the bulk of my comments pertain to item five on the agenda, but item four, you know, I have some concerns and recommendations for y'all also. Would it be more appropriate if I waited until item five is officially under discussion?
The, the drawback would be you wouldn't be able to be mentioning anything that might affect item number four if you defer to item five. If there's a way that you could just make your comments germane to item four, that'd be great. Or I guess you could speak all of your comments. Would that work, Mr. Duncan, if he speaks everything for item four and five at this time?
It's probably better that you keep the agenda items separate, so obviously he'd have an additional five minutes for the other agenda item, but I think if he kept it to just the rezoning of the 5.27-acre piece on this, for this public hearing comment, and then preserve the rest of his comments for the agenda item number five.
Great. Argumentable that. Can you portion out your comments that you were going to say and just speak to the rezon for item four at this time?
Perhaps I'll wait until item five then, if that's, I, I didn't understand what you just said, but...
But just mentioning, if you could please just tailor and make your comments to the item at hand on item number four, that would be most beneficial. And if we could recalibrate the clock to, to, thank you, we're due, okay, great.
Well, I'll, I'll come up again. I'll make a comment now, but I'll, I'll come up again. You may not want me up again, but...
No, you're more than welcome to come up.
Seven, seven years ago, we bought our home on the east fringe of the Wheatland Estates and paid a premium price, as did a number of our neighbor, my neighbors that are here tonight, because of the view that we had looking to the east, to the mountains, to Draper, to Mount Tempanogus, to the mountains even up into Davis County. It's an incredible view, and we were promised at that time by the city and the developer, Bangator Brothers, that the areas under consideration primarily item five would be green space, open space, and not developed. If this development goes through and our views are diminished by multi-story homes, our property values go down significantly. We have a little bit of a, a problem with that. I understand that it's our bad that we believed the promises from those of the city that were here at that time. Please don't take any of this personally because none of you were probably there when those comments were made. But I'm kind of on a slow burn here a little bit because we keep getting told things, and then somehow it, it changes. Just last year, we were told, and the city council approved, a 60-foot berm to go along the railroad tracks there. Railroad tracks carry hazardous materials. We were concerned about a train accident or something happening there, and so the city council approved a 60-foot wide berm. Where is that? I don't see any berm there. We wanted that land as a buffer. The mayor told us that he'd provide us a human buffer. So we're grateful for our beloved Mayor Wolf, who may now be getting his wish that somebody else's wives and children will die fiery deaths in a train accident, but they will buffer us. So, you know, I suppose we're okay with that. But those are the kind of things that we get told, and then all of a sudden, it goes away. I have no problem with Mr. Bowler. I wish him success in his business, and this isn't personal, but we'd like things like the 60-foot berm put back. To help our property values stay somewhat where they are, I would ask for a recommendation that only single-story homes be allowed in this subdivision. We could then see over the top of them and, and have no problem. So overall, I'd like to make those two recommendations, please, to, to you, and, and we trust you, and I know, I know you're good folks, and you just, we just have a problem with what's going on here. The two requests would be to reinstate the 60-foot berm along the railroad tracks, which, by the way, now that 60-foot berm has now become a six-foot vinyl fence to provide protection from the train problems or problems from the National Guard base. I'm not sure that's adequate. And the other request is single-story homes only, please. But whatever you do, overall, certainly this is better than a nuclear waste facility, which was threatened by city council in their meeting last year. Not sure if that was an official threat, but we were told that we should accept what they were saying or they'd find a nuclear waste facility. So we hope that your sanity will prevail with them and that these things can be reinstated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hunt. Right on time. Would anyone else like to speak on this item?
My name's Emily Hernandez, and I live at 7709 South, 4730 West. I, like Mr. Hunt, have concerns with item number four and five, but I will speak on item number four right now. My main concern with item number four, what is that those houses that are going to be on that rail line are also backing up to a UDOT station, which you, that UDOT station runs 24/7. And so those people, I mean, obviously, I know when they buy the house, they're going to see the UDOT station, but I'm not sure if they're going to be aware of the kind of noise. I live on that east side row that backs up to that empty lot, and we get the noise and also light pollution from that UDOT station to pet houses that much closer to that UDOT station. I just really disagree with. And when, especially in the winter, when that UDOT station is running at full capacity, there is a lot of noise and traffic in and out of that road. And being so close to the rail line to funnel that many more houses and that much more traffic up onto 7690 and out to 7800 West, to make a left-hand turn there is going to be almost impossible. So that's my concern. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Would anyone else like to come forward?
Commissioners, my name is Paul Emmett. I live at 7511 South, 4730 West. I'd like to just start out by pointing... I'd like to just start out by pointing out that the applicant, Bowler Properties, is not the landowner. And this is an important distinction, because he's under contract to buy the land for item number four if item number five and item number four are approved. And item number five includes land that the city owns. I point that out, because we see a conflict of interest in the role of the city staff who are supposed to provide you background information, to give you the framework within which you make your decisions. I'm not accusing Mr. Gardner of anything. I'm just saying that there is a conflict of interest. And I'm happy to go through the, all of the different pieces of that conflict of interest with you. It involves the previous city manager, Mark Pillish, and one of his agenda items that he wanted to accomplish within his, within his term. I think that some of the missing information that we see, and again, I'm not accusing Mr. Gardner of purposely omitting any information, but we see information that was omitted. And that is that last year, last August, for item number, sorry, for the property north of item number four, you found that it was not compatible or did not meet any of the findings, any of the criteria or findings. Unanimously, and I don't remember if all of you were on the commission last year, but unanimously, you found that it was not compatible. We see the same incompatible use for item number four. It is next to a rail line, it's next to UDOT facility, next to kitty corner to the National Guard Base. The, last year, the Colonel from the National Guard Base and the manager for the UDOT station came in and testified that it would be an incompatible use, in their view. We want to remind you of those items and encourage you to hear those items when you make your considerations. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Emmett. And we also want to mention that we are in receipt of the letter that you wrote, and we'll include that in a minute.
I would want to also encourage you, if you have questions, I consider myself somewhat of an expert on these pieces of land and the background information. And because we see a conflict of interest, if you have questions for the staff, if you would also ask us, we might have some additional information for you.
Thank you, sir. Any other comments on this item?
My name is Chris Tucker, 7647 South, 4730 West. I back that, the northern field as well. I second what the others have said about the area. And I would just like to add in more of a concern of the traffic issues, especially a little bit further east, next to Jordan Landing. I don't know if you've ever tried to turn in Jordan Landing or behind Target. It is a mess. The intersection at 700 South and 4000 West, there's frequent accidents there. Adding more houses to the neighborhood is just going to increase that. So that is my concern, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Miss, I see doing calisthenics up and down.
My name's Breece Perry. I live at 7632 South, 4730 West. I second everything that all of my fellow neighbors have already stated. In addition to their concerns, I have a couple others, one of which is that we have a small existing HOA that we pay into that takes care of the, excuse me, adjacent retention pond that's smaller. So my question is, and will they be incorporated into that? Will we be separated? There's other entrances into the neighborhood that have park strips as well that are adjacent that the new subdivision would be utilizing as well. Would our costs go up? Would they go down? I just think it should be part of the discussion. Also, this year, we've been having much difficulty with getting our kids across 78th with no crossing guard associated with that intersection. And I believe adding more homes is just going to combat that problem, as well as increasing more kids that are going to be going to the Hayden Peak. And our districts are already being kind of discussed about moving around and changing and disassociating us from schools that we had chose our homes in that area so that our children could go to the schools that were associated with that. Adding more homes in a neighborhood just as big as ours that's in there will definitely probably tip that scale and add to the frustration of not getting proper support associated with that. So, and again, the berm not being there, the airport, the noise level, the UDOT noise level, and the fact that it was as well, I wasn't one of the ones that paid a premium lot price, but I was told and promised that that would be developed into some type of a park. I have a home that's next to a park strip. The whole reason for the park strip was to have an entrance to a park that will no longer be there, it sounds like. So promises that have never came to fruition, it's hard to swallow. So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Perry. Anyone else on this item? We'll close the public comment section, and let's see if we can get some clarification from city staff on, well, we've got a little bit of a laundry list. Views, reinstating 60-foot berm, single-story homes, UDOT station with the noise light and traffic, conflict of interest on if Mr. Bowler can apply for a zone change on property that he does not presently own, traffic, homeowners association, crossing guard, schools enrollment. Why don't we go through them one by one? Here we go. Mr. Gardner?
Yes, Mr. Bowler can apply for a zone change on property. The church signed an affidavit that allowed him to do that. They're fully aware of what he's trying to do with their property. Number two, I'm not conflicted in any way. And Duncan can enlighten us all on what the conflict of interest in the state of Utah means, but...
Typically, that means a financial conflict of interest, and you have nothing to gain. So the, the conflict of interest law does not define you as having a conflict of interest, since there's been no factual allegations that you have anything financially to gain.
I'm saying, stating emphatically, I'm not gaining anything financially from this. I'm simply an employee of the city of West Jordan, ministering a contract or an application that has come before me. As far as the 60-foot berm, I was not made aware of that. That was taken out of the sales contract. I was made aware of that a while back, that the city council did want that in there, but Mr., whoever presented the sales contract to Bowler Properties had taken that out. And I'm, again, not an expert on contract law, and so that would probably be Duncan's. And then what were the other questions?
Thank you. Yeah, we'll talk to Mr. Murray about that. And let's, let's, why don't we go single-story homes and the idea of, because we, yes, or we, sir, we can't unfortunately at this point. Sorry. We, yes. Thank you, sir. Right. And we're going to get to that. We're going to get to that, sir. Thank you. The idea of single-story homes and/or we, and this isn't anything new, but we're not minimizing it, of promises by developers or city officials on views that will be protected for generations to come. We've seen that. Would you like to speak on that? Because I know we'll speak on it as a condition.
Under the Constitution of the United States, there's no, a view is not a property right. It is not protected. However, I think when it gets to the subdivision, I would recommend that the homes along the perimeter of that, or at least the view corridor, be shorter if, and you know, the other problem is when this was rezoned, it was rezoned R18E. That's an awfully large home, a very small lot. And so what I could do is have the applicant provide a home-type plan. I don't know, I don't know if he's planning on building all Ramblers, or if some of them will be two stories. That'll be information that he will have to give at that time. Because all we require in a subdivision approval is that they follow, that they follow the minimum square footage of a home in the zoning ordinance. It doesn't, it can, as long as it doesn't exceed 30 feet, then he's within the zoning ordinance. And so he might be able to enlighten you during the next hearing, or maybe he will not want to talk about that and tie his hands. But a view has never been a protected right, unfortunately. And I sympathize with them on the views, because they are very nice out there. In the west side, you get a great view of the Wasatch Front. And so I would be upset also, but maybe we can work with the applicant to make sure that some of that is protected as much as possible. But we cannot mandate it, is what I'm saying.
Thank you. Yes, because we see it's the tough conundrum of the rights of the property owner meshing with the rights of the adjacent property owners to develop their property in a manner that is allowed by the current zoning, which zoning changes over time. Let's see. UDOT station, noise light, traffic, again, I don't think that we can really address that. If I'm correct, that that's nothing that's in our purview this evening, not to pass the buck, but there are certain things that we can talk about. To me, it's a similar situation with the school situation, where Jordan School District by law has to service each student, but isn't required to tell us how, and it can't be a condition of approval for us as mandated by state law. We can't even consider that.
You're correct. And as far as UDOT, they don't have roughshod and cart blunts just to violate noise ordinance. You know, so if it's, you know, I can see if it's the middle of a heavy snowstorm and they need to be there in the middle of the night loading salt and that type of thing, then I think people could be sympathetic to that. But if they're doing maintenance on vehicles at 11 o'clock at night, when it can be done just during the day, you know, I think that can be addressed another way.
Thank you. Interesting question by Ms. Perry on HOA. That's a good one that I hadn't thought of. And any feedback on that?
HOAs are, they're a requirement of the city that the detention ponds be maintained. The city will not, the city doesn't accept detention ponds for, you know, this is a rather large development, but what we call smaller development, the only thing the city builds anymore is regional detention ponds. And so we require it be maintained by the developer until it's turned over to a homeowners association. The best, I cannot mandate that two groups get together, but I can suggest it. And I've already made that suggestion to the applicant after receiving a phone call from one of the HO, the person that used to be the past HOA president. And I, and the applicant did say that he would look into it, but he did not make any promises to me. But the city can't force two, two HOAs to come together. And we do not enforce HOAs after the recorded subdivision. That's completely an entity that's on its own, so.
And we would have a traffic study as this continues, correct?
Yes, that's a requirement.
So Mr. Tucker's question on traffic, that's at a later date.
Yeah, before final approval, he asked to have a traffic study.
Thank you. I believe that covers everything except the 60-foot berm. Commissioner Green?
Well, I'm going to take a couple of minutes and go down a couple of these, a couple of these things myself. Number one, we didn't like this either. We were adamant against a 7-0. City council overrode us in the zoning for the north piece of property is R18E. What we're looking at is the five-acre site between the north side and between 7800 South. And, and so now, and I understand where the neighbors are coming from. There is, that this site is, as we found months ago, is probably not the best site for homes bordering the Army Aviation Facility and the UDOT. What I'm considering now is what's the best use for this piece of property? And do we have, if we don't include this piece of property in a Bowler development, what ends up there? Anything else that could fall there just seems inconsistent if it's not part of the major development, unless it's a church. I guess we could put a 7-Eleven there, and I'm sure the neighbors would love that, because it's on 7800 South, and it's, 7800 South's becoming a fairly decent artery. If we don't, unfortunately, and you know, you'll probably be able to tell where I'm leaning, but if we don't make, include this as part of this, this project, then it becomes an island that either has a few houses on it that becomes its own development, or it becomes some sort of commercial property along the artery, because we all know that we don't like having homes along arterial routes. We've had that discussion before. As I'm looking at this, that current piece of property is zoned A20. Well, it's a five-acre piece of property on an A20 zone that just doesn't, it doesn't fit. You can't put a 20, you can't put a 20-acre home on a five-acre piece of property, or 20-acre lot on a five-acre piece of property. So this property has to be rezoned at some point in time. The A20 zone doesn't work, and it doesn't fit here. The way it's laid out as being a, the substantial majority of this piece of property appears to, and I'm, I'm actually fast-forwarding, it's going to, it's going to be a detention pond for the rest of the development. So it actually limits the amount of, of the density on that particular five, on that particular, the way I read it, it looks like it's going to be 12 homes per, 12 homes on five acres of land. So in that part of the density, the density is only there, it's going to be half an acre, almost a half acre apiece. So if we don't do this, this is isolated. To address the issue about the traffic at 7800 South and 40th West, we hate that intersection. That intersection's been the topic of multiple, multiple commission meetings. As Mr. Nelson can attest to, we've talked about that intersection, and there are some plans to fix that eventually. As far as the 60-foot berm, I'm not going there. We'll let the city council and the, and the city attorney deal with, deal with that one. And as far as city, single-story homes, we'll talk about that one in the, the next item on the agenda with the subdivision and those types of things. But when it comes to the ordinance, the moment that the city council approved the R18E, they approved the 30-foot homes. That's just, that's just a fact that, that happened, and I didn't, I didn't like the idea of putting R18 homes there, and, and I don't have, but that, that was on the council. But for this five acre site, I think that we have to look at the consistency of, I think we have to look at the consistency with what that would be. And I think if we don't, if we voted against this, I think we're going to end, I think that we're going to end up with, personally, I think we're going to end up something worse on that corner for the neighborhood than what we've got now, particularly the way 4690, that is 4690 if I'm reading upside down correctly, right? The way 4690 goes along the west side of the property, I just, I just can't imagine putting something else in there that would, that would be compatible besides homes. It's either homes or some small commercial development, unless somebody just steps up and decides they wanted to make it a park and donate the money. And, and that, I don't see that occurring right now, since the church owns it. So you can probably tell where I'm going with this, but those are my comments on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. And before we get to the other commissioner comments who would like to chime in, I want to ensure that we allow Mr. Bowler an opportunity to come back up and address anything that he might like to with regard to what was said during the public comment section. Mr. Bowler, would you like any time? That, we'd need to suspend rules for that, correct, Mr. Duncan, or Mr. Murray?
Yes, he really should make his comments now before you have your planning commission discussion. I can also address the 60-foot berm issue right now, if you'd like.
Should we, so that we stay with the usual agenda, thank you, Mr. Murray. Mr. Bowler, now would be the time to make any comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Lot of history here.
A lot of history here. I also know quite a bit about it. But I'd just comment maybe to two or three items. One would be the view issue. You know, the way it is in this world, anytime you buy next to vacant property, you're subject to whatever ultimately develops there. And whether it's park, or housing, or commercial, or whatever it might be, we feel like what we're proposing is a good use for this piece of property, to develop it into a single-family residential. In regards to the height of the homes, I think Mr. Green has addressed that appropriately. We would certainly conform with the restrictions of the R18E zone. Would not be able to restrict anything beyond that. That would not make our development viable. I think the other items that have been mentioned have been addressed by the commissioners.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Boller.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Were you gonna have Mr. Murray?
Thank you. I appreciate you keeping me online. Yes, please, Mr. Murray.
So the question that came up in the public hearing process was the change, when was the change in the 60-foot buffer? So on, as was mentioned in some of the other materials in advance of this meeting, on August 24, 2016, there was a zoning ordinance that changed the zoning for this 24 or so acres to the north of the 5, to R18E. And my understanding is, even though it was not in the text of the ordinance itself, within the motion that passed the ordinance, there was a provision for a 60-foot buffer or protection strip next to the rail line. So that was clearly approved by a 4-2 vote at that time on August 24, 2016. Then nine months later, which was five months ago, on May 10, 2017, there was a Resolution 17-84, which came after a couple of months' request for proposals process, which approved the best bidder to sell the property to that person, which was Randy Boulder's company. That was approved by a 6-0 vote. The RFP process was set up by former city manager Mark Paleish. So in that RFP process that started a couple of months before May 10, is the first mentioning of, in a sense, taking out the 60-foot buffer. So at city manager Mark Paleish's doing, that was taken out of the documents that formally put out the bidding process and allowed people to bid on the land. By the council passing a motion, like I say, on May 10 approving that resolution, they undid their prior motion and took the 60-foot buffer out. There was some talk subsequent to that by some council members that, had they known that it was that way, that in the, in the resolution, in the RFP process, that they would not have voted. So even though it was a unanimous 6-0 vote, there are at least one or two council members that indicated that they did not realize that's what they were doing with their vote. Regardless of what transpired and those facts, I think those individuals can speak for themselves of how they voted. The legal consequence of that, or a legal net result, was that the 60-foot buffer as of May 10 was no longer required on the property. The contract then was, was signed between the city and Mr. Boller as approved by Resolution 17-84, and that contract, consistent with the request for proposal documents, does not have a 60-foot buffer requirement. Therefore, the city at this point has, my legal opinion is, the city does not have any way to legally require Mr. Boller to put the 50, I mean, the 60-foot buffer in. And, but in, to the north of the five-acre piece and the 24-acre piece is another piece that is still owned by the city, and my understanding is, is that property is still earmarked by the city to be developed as a park. So hopefully, that's responsive to the questions that came up on those issues.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. We want to make sure that we give full disclosure and explanation to the public, especially when that's an item of interest. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I've sat on this commission now for almost three years, and my heart goes out to you guys. It really does. Because, you know, you guys may not know this, but we're all volunteers up here, everybody's sitting up here, volunteer. And we sit up here because we care about the way our city develops. We care about how things flow, we care about how it works, and I was one of the ones that voted against this. Well, all of us were that were on the commission at that time. We didn't like this project. We thought it was not the right fit, it was a bad spot for houses. We felt like, you know, this was just not a good development. And I'll tell you, there have been times on this commission when I've driven home after the meeting just steaming mad. And when I, when I hear sometimes what the council decides based on our recommendation, I'm furious, livid. But one thing that makes the way that our communities run great is that we have due process. And maybe the city council voted in a way that, that went against what I wanted, and went against what you wanted. That's why we have voting, you know? And I'm not trying to say get anybody out, I'm just saying that, that at least we have the option to change things. In this, in this instant, the subdivision that we all voted against got approved. The zoning changed, it's going there. And as frustrating as that may be, what we have now is an opportunity to work with what's going in. So I know that a lot of you are upset about it, but the best thing that we can do at this point is take what we've got and try to work with it to make it livable for everybody. To the site that we're talking about tonight, this five acres that's right up against 7800 South, I'm gonna go right against what Commissioner Green said. No, I'm sorry, Commissioner Green, but I, and if you look through the history of my comments on this commission, arterial routes are not where homes go. It's where businesses go. It's where access to services go. And yes, there's subdivision all along this side, and there's subdivision, you know, I didn't decide to put it there, and I wouldn't have decided to put it there, because that's not where homes go. But where we have a UDOT facility to the, to the east of the project site, and we have arterial route to the south of the project site, and we have a road on 4690 West that's already on that section, which it's hard to get inlets and outlets off of a UDOT section, and I know this is, I don't think 7800 South at this point is a UDOT road, is it? It is? Okay. So it's, it's hard to get access points in and out off 7800 South, because we can't control them. In my opinion, is a perfect spot for a small business to be. And by saying, let's build houses there because we already have houses there exacerbates the problem. Problem, once you put roads in, roads stay. Look at Rome, or any of the old cities, and if you look in an aerial map over hundreds of years, the roads stay. Once roads go down, usually that's what you got forever. And so in my opinion, this is our one chance to put a business along 7800 South instead of houses. And if we do that, who knows what's gonna happen down the line? But as 7800 South becomes a busier street, which it will become a busier street because of all the development out west, we're gonna end up with, you know, I just don't see that this is the highest and best use for this site. I think that it should be community commercial, or something of the like, professional office. I can think of a lot of things that go better there than, than houses. I mean, I wouldn't want to live there, and I said this in the last meeting when we discussed these properties. I wouldn't want to live next to a train track, or UDOT station, or busy 7800 South. I don't want to listen to helicopters flying over my house. I don't think that anybody's gonna want to live there. And my problem with this site is that people are gonna move in, see them the nice houses, they're not gonna understand what the noise level is, what the stuff's going on, and then they're gonna move out, and these houses are gonna reduce in value, and we're gonna end up with a site that's got, you know, it's gonna turn into a slum. And I don't want a slum in West Jordan. So I don't think that this is an appropriate use of this site, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Sikoski. And a reminder to citizens, thank you for your comments, but please no calling out, appreciate that. Commissioner Luthy?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I was not on the commission at the time of the north discussion. However, if we took the north discussion completely out of it, I don't feel like this change is a good change for this site. The point of coming here is to prove that making a zoning change is beneficial for us, and it is the applicant's job to prove that, and I don't feel like that's been done. I agree back with Commissioner Sikoski on this. I, we preached over and over again about you need to have your commercial up against your major routes. This is a major route. I think that it's foolish of us to put residential where we told everybody else they couldn't have it. So my vote is going to be against this.
Any other discussion by the planning commission? Seeing none, is there a motion to consider that anyone would like to tender? Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I move the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to city council for the, regarding the application to amend the future land use map for approximately 5.27 acres from neighborhood commercial to medium-density residential on the property located at 4652 West, 7800 South. Because this is an arterial route, and neighborhood commercial belongs there, I also feel that because of the current property uses around it, namely the railroad line to the east, the UDOT station to the east, that this will not be, well, and the helicopters flying over, this is not a good site for residential, and that it will become a slum if we build it.
And just a point of clarification, and I might have missed it, did you mention anything about a rezone? I didn't hear any words of rezone.
Yeah, I said regarding the, oh yeah, and the, and the rezone. Forward a negative recommendation for the rezone.
Simply because this item has two parts to it?
Oh, yeah.
The general plan land use amendment?
Yeah.
The medium-density residential and rezone.
That's the second motion. So I'll make a separate motion for that.
Understood, thank you. So not inclusive of a rezone on your motion. Commissioner Hanson.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Sikoski, and a second by Commissioner Hanson, is there any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously 7 to 0. Commissioner Sikoski.
And for the second motion, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move to the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to city council regarding the application of rezone approximately 5.27 acres from Agricultural 20 to R18E, single-family homes, or R18E zone on property located at 4652 West, 7800 South, for the exact same reasons in the previous motion.
Commissioner Hanson.
I'd second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sikoski, a second by Commissioner Hanson, any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously 7 to 0. Bringing us to item number five, Woodland Farm, Wood Farms subdivision, 4652 West, 7800 South, preliminary subdivision plat, 95 lots on 28.07 acres, R18E zone, Bowler Properties L.C., Randy Bowler is again the applicant.
Before, before you go there, can we ask, can I ask a question?
Believe we can.
Since we, this will be to the, to the city attorney, since we just made a negative recommendation to the city council for the rezone, we can't, can we consider number five because, on that matter? Because city council's gonna have to look at the, the recommendation first, correct? And, and if they choose to follow, this, this, this would be putting the cart before the horse by us doing this, correct?
We can't approve it.
We can't, we couldn't, we can't approve this because we've just done the other, it would be an inconsistent action.
You can, the issue is that you're just recommending regarding the zone change, you're not the final decision maker, the final, you are the final decision maker on the subdivision application.
But, but if we, if, but if the property, if the prop, if five acres of the property's not rezoned correctly, even though, I mean, I get we're not the approving authority, but how, we can't, how can we approve something if the property's not rezoned? I mean, I mean, obviously, if they, if, if we had have voted to approve the rezone, then the city council's probably just, I'll say that, they'll rubber stamp that. But given this, given, given the, and I'm just gonna step back, given the history of, I'm gonna throw out the 60-foot, you know, and everything else, the citizenry's gonna hit the city council up pretty hard on this one. We don't know what the city council's gonna do, and so I'm, I'm almost wondering if agenda item number five is not premature, because that all is in the purview, and we're talking about a consolidated 29 acres and a subdivision plat that we can't approve until we know that the zoning's appropriate.
I'm gonna defer to Larry Gardner as far as what our past history and protocol has been on this issue. This is largely how each city decides to deal with it, as far as their tradition and their history. So in the past, Mr. Gardner, what, what have we done when this situation arises?
Well, this is a unique circumstance, and there's time constraints on the sale of this property by the city. And so that's the reason that both applications are before you tonight, and hence, in the staff report, the entire subdivision is contingent upon the rezone of the 5.27 acres. And bear in mind, it's this preliminary approval, and if the city council chooses not to rezone that property, then there will be a redesign of the subdivision, because by right, the 24 acres to the north, he has a right to develop that as a subdivision, so there'll be a redesign of the property. That would have to come back to you. This was noticed as a public hearing, so I'd strongly discourage the planning commission from, for lack of a better word, from punting it tonight and hold the public hearing that it was all these people came out for, and instead of making them come out of their homes another time down the future. And so the whole subdivision's contingent upon the approval of the zone change, and since it's preliminary approval and not a final approval, I don't see any issue with going forward with the, the item on the agenda.
Great, thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. And there's nothing in your ordinance that precludes it, so.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. Thank you, Mr. Gardner. I, I see what you're saying, Commissioner Green, I also see, as has been mentioned...
I just want to make sure we're going down the right road.
Sure.
I don't care which way we go, I just want to make sure we're on solid ground with the way that we're doing it.
Right.
I just want to make sure we're on solid ground with the way we're doing it.
Because the way I see it, whether we approved it or denied it, we're not the final say, so it, in a way, that bears no relevance, just in my mind, on number five, because the city council could accept it or deny, even if we would have approved it.
Now, that's just the zone change, you are the final authority on the preliminary plot.
Yes, I'm talking about number four, right? So.
We are the final approval.
Mm-hmm. So, can I ask just a quick question to Larry? So the way that the roads were laid out on number five tied into the way that the roads were on number four, if we approve tonight...
If we approved tonight, does that create a problem with the way that the property? I mean, are we going to end up with stub streets?
No, there won't be any stub streets. There's already stub streets under the property and into the property from the south and north. And so what I'm saying is if the city council goes forward and denies the zone change for the 5.27 acres, there will have to be a redesign of the subdivision. That, that would be enough of a change that would have to come back before the planning commission.
Okay. I just don't want to create a mess, so. Thank you.
But all I'm saying is that we deal with the application at hand tonight. And the public did come out to, you know, and so.
Thank you for all that great comments. Thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Green. And thank you, Mr. Murray and Mr. Gardner. So, Mr. Bowler, would you like to come up and present item number five this evening?
Thank you. Beginning of the meeting, I asked that there be no hard questions.
We tried our best.
Some hard questions have come up, and they're good questions. We are very anxious to move forward. So hearing the discussion and seeing the dilemma, my feeling would be that I would be hopeful you would hear the application, that you would approve preliminary plat subject to final zoning approval. That would be a condition of the plat approval. And if that final zoning does not happen, then that nullifies your preliminary plat approval. And we're back square one. Should the zoning go forward, then that has not held us up on going forward on our preliminary plat approval. And I think that's probably the best way to satisfy both sides into the dilemma that we have. If you will approve preliminary plat subject to final zone approval. Any questions you'd have for me?
Questions for Mr. Bowler. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
One moment. Mr. Gardner, item number five, please.
And so I really don't need to go in where the item's located. We're all aware of that. And what the accesses are. What I will say is that the overall density of the development is 3.2 units per acre. So it is very, it's the same as what is around the properties with the exception to cross 78 South or a little less dense. But it certainly is compatible with Wheatland Estates. It has sufficient utilities, accesses, access points. And as stated earlier, a traffic impact study will, is a requirement of final approval. The storm water will all be collected on site before it's metered out to 7800 South. With that being said, this use of residential, single family residential homes next to single family residential homes is compatible, both in density and in use. Along the eastern portion of the development where the rail line is, the planning commission has the opportunity to determine what type of fence would go along that very, very long stretch of property along the rail line. President, the applicant has just proposed a six-foot vinyl fence. However, the planning commission, if it deems that to be enough of a hazard to the future residents, could propose something more substantial such as a masonry wall or a precast concrete wall along that. That is more expensive. But if it feels like that that is a dangerous situation, then the planning commission can impose that. Other than that, this development, and there would be a street wall, of course, along 7800 South if the zoning is finally approved and the subdivision is approved along there because that is an arterial street. With that being said, the staff feels that this meets all of the zoning requirements and the subdivision requirements of 2009 city code and recommends that the planning commission approve the preliminary plat.
Thank you. Questions for Mr. Gardner? Mr. Gardner, could you mention something about open space relative to this?
Open space?
Any requirement on open space?
Not in an R18 zone, there's not. But it does have nearly a two-acre retention pond that will be planted inside. And that, that would be both a dual use as a retention pond, which would be the primary engineering function. And that would also be an open space for the residents, not only of this development but the whole area. And one thing I failed to mention is there will be a trail connection along this entire front. There'll be an asphalt trail built as out, as is outlined in my staff report. That will connect to the open space out to 7800 South. Eventually, there is a, if you go to the north of the city-owned property, then there is a trail connection that would go all the way to 78 South. So with this development, that trail will connect, at least be a link that will be connected to eventually whatever happens to that property in the north. And I'm very cautious to say anything what's going to happen with that property because I don't know. And we've all learned that, you know, just to throw things out is not a good thing because sometimes people get hurt by that. And so, anyway, but I recommend approval of this.
Thank you, Mr. Gardner. This was also noticed as a public item. If you'd like to speak on this, please feel free to come forward. Even if you've spoken on item number four, you're welcome to come back. It's a brand new item.
Thank you for this discussion. I don't recall who, who said this. One of your highnesses, I'm sure, will remember that you can't place restrictions on a, on something once the zoning has been approved by the city council. You tell us what color we can, what brick we can put on our homes, the caliber and size and genus of trees that we can plant in our yards. I can't believe that a restriction for a single-story home would be too far out of line. I live in a single-story, 3,500-square-foot home. And, and it's not a problem. Comment was made about the smaller lots maybe not accommodating a single-story home. I believe they do if the builder will take advantage of what he could do there. You can see why we're upset that arbitrarily this berm was taken out willy-nilly without letting anybody know. Some former city manager put together paperwork for sale and deleted the berm. You can see why we're upset. I'm hoping, and I would recommend, I'm not the expert here, but I would recommend that if it can be willy-nilly taken out, it could be willy-nilly put back in. That we can undo the undo and put the 60-foot buffer back in there. Again, I wish Mr. Bowler no ill, but we're looking out for our interest here as well. I, again, would personally be okay if you approved the, the item for the homes that to go in there as long as that 60-foot buffer berm is reinstated and that single-family homes could be built there. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak to this item?
My name is Paul Emmett. I live on 7511 South, 4730 West. I want to address a couple of things for the commission. First is the legal definition of conflict of interest that Mr. Murray gave. I'm sure that you're aware that definitions have their place and they apply to certain things. I don't know whether that was from the criminal statute or from some other code that Mr. Murray took his definition. But certainly you should be aware that there is a conflict of interest here defined generally. I think we can see evidence of that in that the berm was deleted by the city manager and that the council members voted on it unaware. How were they unaware of it? Well, the staff didn't prepare the right information for them. Now, I'm not saying that the staff did this on their own, but they have an interest in not getting fired or not getting demoted. And Mr. Gardner may say that he has, he's not conflicted based on Mr. Murray's definition, but the fact is that Mr. Gardner works for Mr. Oka and Mr. Oka worked for Mr. Pelesch. And he's presented to you evidence that has omitted certain facts. And so I think that you should be aware that you are not getting the full information. I also want to say that there are easements on the property of the Wheatland Estates for stormwater access that will now be between two parcels without access from city staff. I would encourage you to place stipulations that those easements be removed or moved to publicly available access points. I also want to encourage you to consider that the zoning ordinance 16-34 included a 60-foot berm. And although it was removed, we've heard Mr. Murray state that some council members did so unknowingly. This is what I ask you to consider. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Emmett. Would anyone else like to speak and bring up anything new on this item?
My name's Emily Hernandez and I live at 7709 South, 4730 West. I'm not sure if this item's new, but I know we keep rehashing the rail line as well. I know we're not going to be able to prevent the houses from going in, but I'm also not sure if those of you who are new on the commissioner, who were here last time when we had the discussion on this, if you're aware of what that rail line carries. It's hazardous material. It's not just, I don't know, people or other stuff. It's hazardous material, which is why it runs at the night and why it runs slow, which is why me and other people from our neighborhood are rehashing the berm as well. We would like to see the berm because we are concerned about the citizens who would be living that close to the rail line. Because as it sits right now, that their houses would back right up to that rail line. And if that, if, heaven forbid, but if it was to ever derail or crash, the material that that train carries is bad and it would affect those people instantly. And hopefully a berm would potentially, I guess, give people a little bit of time to escape before, I guess, their lives were taken. My other concern is I really encourage you to conduct your traffic study survey that you say you conduct because as it sits right now, the traffic would funnel through 4690 West and then up to, and then the other road, I don't know the street, but up to 4800 to that roundabout. And that roundabout at 4800 is already unsafe. And to put potentially 95 more houses. So before that's approved or if it does get approved, I would strongly encourage your traffic study survey. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hernandez. Anyone else this evening?
Hi, my name's John Jordan. I live at 7491 South, 4730 West. I'm here to voice my concerns about this new development. First off, I've got one issue is with the height. It seems it's medium density, maybe drop it to low density to drop the population in this area. Traffic is going to go through the roof as it already is with 78th, 100th South and 48th West. Turning out on 78th is almost impossible turning left. It is just going to get worse when the development out to the west gets finalized. There again, on the premium for the lot, we were duped into believing by West Jordan and others that we were going to have a city park behind us. We paid a premium so we would have that green space behind us. We are not having it now. Under my impression is that West Jordan received this property free by a farmer. Now you guys are reaping the benefits for the land sales, the impact fees, the sales tax, everything that goes on with the neighborhood. That wouldn't be upsetting to get some of that money back because we were promised. Now, our view, yeah, it is going to be infringed. I can't control that any more than you guys can to a point. But that should be looked at of giving some funds back. The other thing is, is on the HOA. Bangator Homes had to put in easement or HOA and take 4800 South or 4800 West. We had to maintain it. We pay to maintain that road. West Jordan should take all of that over if they're going to put this in. And the other thing is the responsibilities of the HOA. Since no such park was put in, they should be able to put that back in our pocket and we not have to pay for it. The detention pond is one thing, I understand that. But the other on 4800 West and the other street adjoining into our neighborhood. And that's all I pretty much have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jordan. Anyone else this evening?
Chris Tucker, 7647 South, 4730 West. When I first moved into this area, I was never told about the train. I saw railroad, figured it was never used. I never saw trains on it. Then came at night, midnight, 3:00 in the morning. That's when I found out about it. People moving into this neighborhood, I doubt they're going to know about it like me. So that's my concern. I also want to stress, I know this is a time-sensitive thing, but let's not rush it. I ask you to please think about this carefully, not, not to push it through just because somebody wants it done. Let's do the right thing. And I thank you for your time and your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Appreciate that. Anyone else?
My name is Tamara Parko. I live at 7727 South, 4730 West. I think our view and our lot premiums have kind of been hashed to death, but we're still paying for them. So we'll go ahead and let that go because it's been hashed out. But I'm just asking the developer to think about the safety of the people he's going to sell these homes to. I realize it's a financial investment and that it's something that's his livelihood. I get that. But it's my livelihood to protect people as a citizen and in my profession. And if he wants to take, or I guess the city, I don't know how that's even legal to just take it out, but apparently it is. The berm needs to be there. Would you want your mom to buy that house? Do you want your kids to live in that house? I wouldn't want to buy that house. Is there going to be some kind of disclaimer of risk given to the buyers of those homes? Or do they get to move in and find out the hard way? Like, we're learning the hard way that our lot premiums are useless, right? We're learning the hard way. How many other people have to learn the hard way? It's unfair and it's dishonest. A vinyl fence? I can barely keep my dog in a six-foot vinyl fence. And we're going to keep out a train with chemicals? No, no, we're not. I think everybody in this room knows a six-foot vinyl fence isn't going to do anything. The next thing I'd like to present is I can see that this subdivision is designed a lot like ours where there's houses down the middle. We lovingly refer to that as the racetrack. And the racetrack comes in on the same road that they're wanting to put these houses on. Where I personally live, we call that the starting rate, the starting line of the racetrack because we get it coming from both sides. It's unsafe. It's an unsafe design. The city doesn't maintain it. The officers don't, put officers in there to control the speed. It's just a generally unsafe design. It's just a generally unsafe design. Another thing that the owners of these new homes aren't going to be told. They're going to have to find that out the hard way, too. And I'm just wondering, Mr. Gardner, if you could explain what you mean by a trail? By trail, is that a sidewalk? Because that's kind of what it looks like.
Okay. And we'll get to that. Thank you.
Okay. And I'm just wondering, because of the increase in traffic, will the developer or the city be installing a stoplight and crosswalks and everything else to get 7800 South to protect our kids?
Thank you. And what was your last name again? I'm sorry.
Parco. P-A-R-K-O.
Parco. Thank you, Ms. Parco. Anyone else would like to speak on this item? Come on down.
My name's Bruce Perry, 7632 South, 4730 West. So my address is the intersection to where it's going to connect down from, there's the roundabout that goes into there along 7630 South. And I can tell you right now, what's there now is inadequate to a dead end. I mean, it goes and it ends right where the entrance to this new subdivision is going to be. Vehicles don't stop. They disregard the speed limit. We have tons of kids. We're a very united community within Wheatland Estates. We try to look out for each other, but this makes all of us terrified with more homes, more traffic that are, we are the entrance into their nest, into their area. So we are going to have to funnel them in through there. So I hope that they are taken into consideration, especially along 7630 South. That is right where I border and it's a huge problem with a dead end, let alone an entrance to a whole nother 94 homes. I also as well have due process and I love it and I think it's great, but I'm losing faith in it. You guys voted unanimously against this and it somehow still has happened. So due process goes so far. We paid and some of them paid with money for a premium. Those people may pay with their lives. We've all seen that that space and green space surrounding it has been used. The airport had talked about as a diversion or a emergency landing, that that space is being gobbled up and they no longer have that. We never said that planes would ever go down from Airport 2 and yet we had two in one month that were just down the road from there. We are limiting and losing green space. We are creating opportunities for disasters to happen. I hope you guys do the right thing and I hope that the city council listens to you this time. It doesn't seem like they do. It seems like they have another agenda. It seems like they have their own priorities to completely disregard a unanimous vote by a committee that they have asked to give them insight into something speaks volumes. And we are losing faith in the system. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close the public comment section and Mr. Bowler, would you like to address anything that's been brought up in the public comment section?
Still waiting for the easy questions. There's my notes. Lot of the issues, lot of feelings, lot of history. And the challenge now that you have is to sort through all that and vote what you feel would be right. I, I wouldn't address any particular issue other than to just state that we're anxious and willing and capable to go forward with the development and would like to do so. So we'd appreciate your consideration of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowler. We'll bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Green.
I've got a couple of questions for the legal staff before we, just to probably clear up a couple of things. So we've heard from the citizens that there, the road is maintained by the HOA. How would that work if, if, I'm assuming that this is a standard subdivision, that the roads are going to be dedicated to the city. So how does the tie-in work there?
The roads are public roads. They're not maintained, but the detention pond is, but none of all those roads out there are dedicated public streets.
Okay. And then the next question is, any of the easements that are there have to be respected under the current, because the easement runs, the last time I took my real property class and I didn't do very well in it, the easements run with the property and the easements have to be respected based on the nature of that easement, correct?
Right. Unless an owner of an easement chooses to and actually signs a document and records it with the county recorder's office to give up his easement, then that easement stays in place.
I just wanted to make sure we were clear on a couple of those before we talk about other stuff.
The other item I just wanted to mention real quick is what I was talking about earlier about conflicts of interest for public employees. It's the Utah Public Officers and Employees Ethics Act, which is Utah Code Section 67-16-1 to 67-16-15. And again, I haven't heard any evidence tonight that would say that Mr. Gardner has violated any provision of that state law. So, and I haven't heard any evidence tonight that would implicate that he had anything to do with Mr. Pelish's actions.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Again, I just reiterate that there was a comment made earlier about zoning that we'd like to see it go to lower density. And I just reiterate that the zoning for this property happened a year ago and that it's not under the purview of our commission tonight to consider that or even, you know, we don't even have power here. We're just making a recommendation. So I would encourage all of you to pay attention to the city council's meetings and when this item comes up under the city council, they're the deciding body on this one. So be there. Make your voice heard. Make your opinions heard. We'll forward our recommendation tonight, but we're not the deciders. So please.
We are the decider on this.
Oh, we are on this one. That's right. Well, never mind on that. What was the other one? So my question is for Larry. So obviously the subdivision has to be set back far enough from the railroad to have the railroad's safety easement. Is that correct?
What do you mean by that?
So like, I don't know who owns the rail line through there, but they have requirements on safety boundaries between where something can be built versus where their train can run. Am I correct in assuming that?
Not that I'm aware of.
No, you know, okay. Gotcha. So, so this is more just for the commission, I guess, by way of discussion. Since part of our job is trying to decide the, the health, welfare and safety of the citizenry, I mean, I know it's a slow-moving train that goes through there, but we also now know that carries hazardous waste. And, you know, but I also know that I haven't heard of any train accidents, you know, along that rail line. So that it becomes kind of a dilemma for us to decide if a 60-foot berm is necessary.
Can I interject something?
I was going to say, correct me if I'm wrong, but the criteria for preliminary subdivision doesn't include anything about safety, health or welfare.
No, it does follow the ordinance and I might add, there's never been any evidence that it's strictly a train that carries hazardous waste or the number of trips or, and so, you know, I would not, I would not base any of your decisions on that. But if you can just follow the ordinance, that would be the safest approach.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I was on the commission when we looked at this and we voted unanimously not to allow any type of building here due to the fact that you've got an airport right next door to you along with the railroad track. And there were people here from the military explaining to us how those helicopters work. They hover at 40 feet. These houses are at 30 feet. That's 10 feet above your house. That is a problem for me. Now, I don't know that we can deny that because the military is there. That would be a decision that Mr. Murray would have to answer, but that to me is a safety problem with the military there. Because as Mr. Sikoski said earlier, people are going to move in and not realize that those Blackhawks and those huge helicopters out there are moving day and night. I don't live too far from that airport and I see how often they are moving. And they are not that high up over my house and I'm down on 2700 West. So that to me is a safety issue. Whether that is something we can consider is up to Mr. Murray. He would have to decide that, but to me, that is a problem on this piece of property.
Yeah, and I probably should chime in right there that this agenda item is different than your last one because the last one for you was quasi-judicial in nature and then it's legislative in nature for the council. So you have almost unfettered discretion as long as you're not making an illegal or unconstitutional or discriminatory decision. This one, however, is an administrative action. Now, the property, at least the 24 acres, is purely an administrative action and Utah Code Section 10-98-509, Sub 1, Sub A, Sub 2, Little I, that's in the Land Use Development and Management Act, says that an applicant is entitled to approval of a land use application if the application conforms to the requirements of the municipality's land use regulations in effect when a complete application is submitted. And so unless you can point specifically chapter and verse to a part of the ordinance that they're not meeting as to the 24 acres, my legal opinion is you have to grant it. Now, as to the other five acres that is currently zoned, something else, you could, you have one of two options. One is you could deny the subdivision plat, preliminary plat, on the basis of it does not meet current zoning. You could also say that you are approving it based upon, or conditionally approving it as long as the council does approve the zone change as to that five acres.
Thank you. The other issue I wanted to bring up is I do believe, it has been mentioned, that a chain link fence is not preventative. It doesn't hide the train. It doesn't stop the train. And I think that rather, I would like to see a masonry fence there, a decorative, if you paid high property value because you had a park view, I would like to see a decorative masonry fence there.
And that is in the ordinance. You can choose that.
And we, I mean, it does give you the prevention. It gives you privacy. And so if this is going to go through, I think that should be part of the recommendation, that it be not a masonry fence, but a decorative masonry fence so that it does give you more value to your property. Thank you.
And the way the ordinance reads is it can be a masonry wall or a decorative concrete wall or an opaque fence.
Commissioner Luthy.
Yes, thank you. I have a couple of questions. One is for our engineer over there. With this drainage easement that's been discussed along the back of this property line, is it West Jordan's current standards that that has to be accessible by truck to be able to be repaired at all times? Is this, is this going to cause a problem with leaving this in place? I know lots of cities require that as soon as it's not got like a drivable path to it, it needs to be relocated elsewhere, so.
If the drainage easement contains a channel or some kind of conveyance of water, then yes, we need to have access to it.
Okay, but if it's piped, does it, do you have?
It still needs an easement. That's correct.
The easement, sure, but does it need to have like a way for a truck to be able to get back there? Like, it can't just be, what I'm asking is, it can't just be like on a fence line and say that you've got 10 feet either way and there's your easement, right?
That's just not necessarily. If, if it's piped, we usually send the plans out to our public works operations people. They look at it to see if they've got access to get to either the truck. Not, the truck doesn't necessarily have to be there, but they have to be able to get equipment to clean it or flush it or whatever it is. So we let them make the call.
But if something were to do where the pipe broke within the easement and they have to get on there to fix said pipe that's broke within the easement, it may mean that they're just taking down fences and everything else. There's nothing saying it needs to be relocated so it's easier to handle that way.
No, but if there, if there is a, let's say there's a pipe and there's a fence nearby or there's trees or there's, you know, other objects, then, and there's an, and they're within an easement, then the city's within their right to remove the fence, remove a tree, whatever they have to do to get to their pipe. But then as good, good practice, we usually, you know, we will replace those items as well.
I took it to mean that the easement was running between the old neighborhood and the new neighborhood, but I could be wrong on that. That's what I had read into that comment, was that that's where it's at. Is that the case?
I'd have to, whoever made the comment would have to clarify that because I'm not sure what they're talking about.
The second item that I had, I had a couple. The second item that I had was in a subdivision like this in times past where we have decided that it needed to have further investigation, whether there was allegations to a spring or traffic problems, we were able to say we will only approve it pending a study of some sort. Is there a study we could put forth to prove whether there is a safety problem along here that could be contingent on approval? I don't see this as any different than a spring or a wetland, a potential wetland or something that you rule out that it's not a problem so you can go forward.
You can do just about anything if you can point to where in the ordinance you're referring to. Like I say, the one thing you can for sure do is require a specific type of fence because that's specifically in the ordinance. But to better answer your question, what's your main concern that you're trying to resolve or get more information about?
I've heard several safety concerns. So my question just was, maybe not even one of them to pinpoint, but with the other, with other things that we have seen, like I said, there's been some where there have been wetland concerns and we said, well, pending a study of whether or not this is a wetland, we'll approve it. Same thing goes. If there, is there some sort of a study? It sounds like everybody's in a I-don't-know nature on this.
Yeah, if you feel like there's sufficient issues, then you can, you can require a study. You just have to be careful how you do it. But the only other concern, the main concern you need to be careful with is there is a ripcord provision, it's called in state law, where you still have to make a decision within a limited amount of time. You can't put it off forever.
Sure, but if we said pending, we'd approve it pending a positive recommendation from this study, that would be sufficient enough.
Right. You just want to make that specific enough as to who's going to perform the study, who's the final decision maker, those kinds of things. But if it's specific enough and you've got the record to support it because you feel like you've had enough comments and information, yes, you can do that.
Okay. I think that was my only questions. I may come back later.
Thank you. Commissioner Green.
Next question. In this, in the R13E ordinance, houses are permitted to 30 feet. We can, correct me if I'm wrong, but we as a commission cannot impose any further conditions based on what the ordinance requires there or allows, correct?
That's my understanding. Unless Mr. Gardner's aware of something else in the ordinance I'm not aware of.
So here's, here's a couple of things for me. As I look at the ordinance, and I'm, I'm first going to address the 24 acres, not the other five that we tried to deep six here a few minutes ago and voted against. The 24 acres that's already zoned R18E is zoned R18E. We can't change that. When the zoning decision was made, the city council determined that there were no health, welfare and safety issues because that's one of the criteria for a zoning change. What we're here to look at is the subdivision and whether the subdivision plat meets the ordinance required and finding, when we look at a subdivision, we're supposed to find whether or not the subdivision is consistent with the city general plan and the adopted goals of the city, that the proposed site has adequate act- the proposed site has adequate access to public highways and streets, and that the proposed vehicular and pedestrian traffic is adequate to permit movement in a manner which is safe and efficient. So there's our safety issue, but it's solely directed to public highways and streets, that the public facilities and services intended to serve the subject development, including but not limited to roadways, parks, or recreational facilities, police, and every, all that other stuff, are adequate to serve the subdivision. And D, it complies, as what Mr. Murray said, it complies with the provisions of the title of the zoning ordinance and other development standards of the city. When I look at this, and I'm looking at this subdivision, particularly the 24 acres, we have a couple of choices. We can approve, we can, we can say, hey, we like the subdivision at 3.23 acres per unit, or acre, or, you know, units per acre. Or we could reject this and have it appealed to the city council. Or Mr. Bowler could come back and propose five acres, 5.5 units to the acre. We go from 96 units to 145. We go 145, just in the, just in the, the 24 acres that are already there. And so my question is, as we look at this, as we look at the subdivision on the wall, taken out, and I hate to say that I want to take out all the emotion. I do think there's a question, if there's an easement, if there's a drainage easement, that we need to address this part of the subdivision. If the, if the drainage easement interferes with a house or two somehow, then I think we need to address that. But we can't address the height of the buildings, we can't address the rail line. I don't think we can address, you know, previous city council decisions on all that other stuff. We have to look at whether or not this subdivision plat that's laid out with the design that it is meets city code with the except, you know, and we can look at the, the wall and those kind of things, but, I, I mean, most of the decision was taken out of our hands when the city council approved this as R18E. I'm, I'm not a fan of putting an east-sized home on an 8,000-square-foot lot. I'm just not. And that's, but that's what I voted against a year ago. At this point in time, I'm trying, I'm trying to reconcile, does this subdivision meet city code, or where does this not meet city code? And the only concern that I have right now is the, the drainage easement and how it would affect any lots. Now, I don't know if that gives us enough, enough, enough evidence to say, we're going to reject this, or it's contingent based on something where somebody looks at the, a drainage easement. I'm still thinking about this. But when I look at, when I look at the criteria, and the fact that it's an administrative action, and we're not, we, we, most of this decision is taken out of our hands. I, I agree with Commissioner Hanson. The vinyl fence is going to be terrible. Vinyl, vinyl fences are, they fall down fast and turn ugly fast, and get, and are graffiti magnets. But the rest of the, the rest of the, the stuff here, I've not seen any evidence that shows that this subdivision is noncompliant with the subdivision ordinance. And, I, I mean, you know, if we, if we had the 60, if, if the 60-foot buffer was there, there's obviously going to be a row of houses that are gone. But I don't, we, I don't think we can, I don't think we can suppose that, that that's ever going to get put back the way the city council took the action. So, there's my two cents. You know, I, I, like I said, we can't impose any zoning conditions on heights. We can, we can make them do a, a fence along the rail, the railway. But I think most of the health and safety and welfare issues were made when the city council decided to, to, to zone this. And I, I don't think that, to tell you the honest truth, I'm not sure that it's in, in our purview, other than the fact that if we look at the, that, whether we have public access appropriate, and a couple other things, I, I don't think it's in our purview to look at any other safety issue that might be there. All we've got to do is make sure this complies with city ordinance, and the only city ordinance that, that, that I've got a question now is, do we have access to a drainage easement that somebody said is there? So there, there's where I'm going with this.
Mr. Nelson?
I'll just speak to the drainage easement. Again, I, I don't know what the, the resident who made the comment was referring to, but it's standard part of our review, that we, we check easements throughout the property, we check the county records, we check previous plats. So we, we know what's going on with the drainage system, and, and that's taken into account with our review.
I, I just, I'm just concerned with, you know, the drain has changed a lot of lines and stuff, and that's my concern.
Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate Commissioner Green's earlier comments, and also Mr. Gardner's comments. Sometimes I let my, the way I feel about a subdivision affect my thoughts, and, and we really, we really do have to just look at it this way. And, and based on what we have here before us tonight, and I know Commissioner Luthy has some comments, but I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
Can I ask a question first?
Sure.
Commissioner Luthy?
So my other question was, along, this was the one I forgot about. Along railroads, very often, there are higher soundproofing-type walls that add just a little bit more of separation from railroads, that are not a standard six-foot, they're often double that or more, that act as a nice sound barrier, they isolate and kind of make the neighborhood feel like they're a little bit farther away from that. Is that something, along with this whole wall discussion, that would be allowable by us to propose?
So the, your main fencing and screening ordinance is Chapter 13-14, and it's Sections 1 through 6. And right at the beginning of 13-14-2, it says, "The developer shall install a permanent fence not less than six feet high of a type approved by the planning commission along boundaries." So, the, where it's, you know, and then you go to the other sections where it says the types of walls, and it sounds like you're preferring a masonry wall, so you can choose that, because it's there. There are other areas within the ordinance that talks about at least six, not more than eight in certain circumstances. But the main provision is that the developer is not required to install anything higher than six feet. It just has to be at least six feet. So unless you can find a specific part of this chapter that you're requiring him to do eight feet under, the, at least the general rule is, you can only require six feet. Now, now, there's always the possibility that, and you can't authorize this, but the council could. If the council wants to pay money to upsize, like it'd be equivalent of upsizing a waterline, and, you know, a lot of times, a subdivision developer's only required to put in, say, a six-inch line, but the, for his development, but the city wants in its master plan a 10-inch line, and if the city is willing to pay for the difference between the six and 10-inch line, they can make the developer put it in, as long as they're paying him the difference. Same thing here. I guess in theory, if the council wanted to say, hey, eight feet, and the most the ordinance requires is six, and if the council was willing to pay for the additional two feet, then, then you could have an eight-foot. Masonry wants to have a six-feet. So hopefully that helps you. The challenge you have as a planning commission, you're not able to require that. I guess you could recommend it in a motion that, you know, maybe be a separate motion, because you're the final decision-maker on the subdivision, but you could make a separate motion just recommending to the council in general. It's not a part of your regular motion that just says that you would recommend that the council consider that.
So the other part with that, and it's another technical question. So amongst the general plan, I went and opened up the Goal 3, and under Goal 3, it talks about for those developments, properties which are likely to have areas of sensitivity, slopes over 30 degrees, high water tables, wetlands. I feel like this falls under some of that sensitivity. It says to encourage clustering of development away from those sensitive areas. Is that simply a recommendation, or is that something we could have any kind of an impact with?
Well, as, as one of your fellow commissioners just mentioned, that's something that the council probably should have taken into account, as they were making the prior zone change on the 24 acres. It's something they could still, still consider as part of the five. It's probably not as germane to the, the 24 acres at this point, where it's already zoned for its current use. The challenge with general plans are, is that they're just that, they're, they're general.
Sure.
And so, unless there's, it's normally the ordinance that has specific provisions that says this is the type of wall, this is the height of the wall, and, and you, you have to be really careful finding generalizations in the general plan, and then trying to apply something specific that's not really there. But, and that is the importance of really looking at the general plan in those other quasi-judicial areas, like tonight, where you had a lot of these zone changes and land use map changes. That's where the general plan is, is highly important. I'm not saying you don't look at that as a filter or a lens with every application. I'm just saying that you've got to be careful trying to apply something from the general plan that's not specifically there.
Okay. Thank you so much for answering that.
Thank you. So just to clarify, Mr. Murray, when you were reading that verbatim, I, I thought that you said that we can, that the applicant has to install a wall of no less than six feet. It doesn't say no more than six feet.
Right, so if he chose to do more, he could, but, but he has to install at least six feet.
Or if he were required to do so, because we could make that as a recommendation to city council.
Like I say, unless, if you can find somewhere else in the ordinance that specifically requires him to do more than six, you can, but at least that general provision at the beginning of that chapter I read only requires him to do six.
Okay, so we've, I believe we've addressed a lot of the issues residents have brought up. There was one about the trail. I believe that goes on the north side, right? Well, on the north side of the top street, so at the bottom part of the top houses, running from left to right, all the way to the circle?
All the way to 78th.
All the way to 78th?
Yeah.
So hopefully that, that answers that. I, I guess it hasn't been mentioned exactly what type of surface that would be, but I guess that's not necessarily what we're-
It's asphalt. It's asphalt, true.
Okay. Great, thank you. What else? We've got rail line, traffic, road, park, berm, fence. The, the whole due diligence, you know, I don't think that we have any purview to say what needs to be disclosed to people, but hopefully, I, I guess the burden would be on potential residents moving in. Traffic, as mentioned in finding B, I, I guess we could arbitrarily say, hey, is this safe? Maybe it's not, but since we're not the experts, says a traffic impact study must be completed, and the applicant must address all concerns prior to final approval of any phase. So the racetrack, the race loop, maybe there will be speed bumps, that, that's for our, our traffic engineers to take care of. So that will definitely be addressed. And it might help to know, as Commissioner Sikoski mentioned, we are all just volunteers. We're all residents of West Jordan. We've got, you know, an engineer, a lawyer, an executive, executive director, someone that's been in planning for 30 years. So we're, we really do work for you. Thank you for calling us, your highnesses, but really, we, we are your servants. We are here to, to serve you. And as has been mentioned, I think we're beholden to follow the code, because we don't have any authority to exact anything more than the code, although I wouldn't want helicopters 10 feet above my house. That's what the code currently allows. And we, being a quasi-legislative action here, we need to follow the code, whereas, again, quasi-judicial on item number four, we're judge and jury on this one. And it's different.
Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you, your royal highness.
Can I ask you a question?
Yes, let's defer motions until the comments are made. We've got-
You guys talk too much.
Commissioner Green, and then Commissioner Hanson.
I just wanted, to the residents, that you talked about the racetrack and traffic stuff, and, and cars going too fast. I, I can tell you that the city engineer and the, and, and those people, if you contact and work with them, they will look at, look at if there are appropriate traffic mitigation things for any neighborhood. There have been traffic, traffic calming devices put in neighborhoods all across the, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Nelson, there have been traffic calming effects put in multiple neighborhoods across the city that the city funds because the issues of the traffic that occur in their neighborhood.
I'll just say, because we don't like going back and retrofitting neighborhoods, we, we like to hit them hard at the subdivision review phase. So I know the, the traffic engineer, when he gets his red pen and he reviews these plans, he'll have a lot to say.
Great. Get him two red pens, just in case, just, just in case we need them, so that we address everybody's concerns in an appropriate manner. Thank you. Commissioner Hanson, did you have something that you wanted to, to say?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Sikoski?
Anybody else?
We're good.
Okay. Well, based on the fact that we have to do this under code, based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report, and upon evidence and explanations received today, I moved to the planning commission, approved the preliminary subdivision plat for Woods Farm on 29.1 acres and containing 94 lots and one parcel located at 4652 and 4654 West, 7800 South, with the provision that the back wall, or, I'm sorry, the wall that borders the railroad track be at least a six-foot masonry wall, decorative masonry And that the approval is contingent upon item number four being approved by city council.
Commissioner Quinney?
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Sikoski, and a second by Commissioner Quinney. Any discussion to that motion? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Neat.
Motion carries six to one, with Commissioner Luthy casting the dissenting vote. Commissioner Sikoski?
Thank you. I would also like to make a second motion, that we recommend to city council that they consider the wall that goes along the railroad track side there, that they would make a consideration of making that a 12-foot sound wall.
I don't know where you have the authority to make that motion.
It's just a recommendation. Is that not? They can make a recommendation. It has, no, it doesn't require the council to do it. The council still has the final authority.
Is there a second to the motion?
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Sikoski, a second by Commissioner Hanson. Discussion to the motion? Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, I just have one issue with requesting, thinking about a 12-foot fence. I'm looking at this, the property that's already developed in that same line further north already has a fence. If we're requiring higher fence here, or asking for a higher fence here, at what point do we taper this down? I just, we're going to get inconsistent fence size along the entire path here, and if we're trying to make this the best and highest use, I just don't see a need to do anything higher. That's just my two cents.
Commissioner Green?
And, and my, my thought would be is that nothing that we heard tonight from the testimony from the residents had to do anything, I mean, it was some sound, but most of it was talking about safety and hazardous materials. So I, I'm not sure the utility of the 12-foot fence there, but that's me.
Commissioner Sikoski?
All right. Motion retracted.
Thank you.
That concludes this item, and for respective of the remaining two items and their applications, to ensure that we can give them the quality, time, and attention they deserve- can give them the quality, time, and attention they deserve, I move that we take a five-minute recess.
That's what I was just, that's why we were buzzing in.
Second by Commissioner Green. Hope you enjoyed the intermission. Got your juju bees and milk duds. We're back for item number six on the agenda tonight. Affordable lawn care and landscape rezone, twenty-five fourteen west seventy-eight hundred south. Rezone a point nine acres from R-one-ten-B, a single-family residential ten thousand square foot lots zone to CG, general commercial zone. Affordable lawn care and landscape is the applicant with Bryson Pulver representing. Please come forward, sir. Thanks for your patience this evening.
Good to be here. My name is Bryson Pulver. I am the owner of twenty-five fourteen west seventy-eight hundred south. And I'm proposing that we rezone the point nine zero acres of you, as you suggested, from R-dash-one-dash-one-zero-B to general commercial. Our purpose is, we are planning to build two small commercial buildings. And we believe the subject property is designated in the general plan for future land use of community commercial along seventy-hundred south, which is intended to satisfy the daily or specialty shopping needs of a community or group of neighborhoods. In this area, medium-scale department stores and supermarkets may be typical uses permitted in community commercial districts as anchors and by a wide range of restaurants, hotels, retail and specialty shops, automobile service stations, and hard goods or soft goods stores. The proposed development will service the community by adding commercial office space for small businesses in the surrounding area, which will add value to that area. This commercial development project will meet all zoning requirements, including landscaping, parking, urban design, screening, et cetera, and will mitigate any potential adverse impacts on adjacent landlords. The proposed development will meet all city engineering requirements, and the property will have access to provide services to the lot under the proposed land use, including water, sewer, storm drain, police, fire, and parks. We believe the proposed commercial development will have a positive impact on schools through further tax revenue brought into the city to put towards the local school district. In summary, we believe the proposed use is consistent with the zone district and therefore will not obstruct general plan policies and will have a positive impact for small businesses along seventy-hundred south and will fit in with the future growth plans with West Jordan That's pretty much it. Do you have any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Pulver. Questions for the applicant? None right now? Thanks for asking. We'll reserve some time for you if there's anything you'd like to say after the public comments. Thank you. Ms. Elgin.
The subject parcel, as you mentioned, is zero-point-nine acres. It is currently zoned R-one-ten-B, and they're proposing to rezone it to general commercial. The, I'm sorry, I think I was missing a slide. The general plan designation for the parcel is community commercial, which the rezone would actually bring the current zoning into compliance with the general plan at this time. There is zoning map, not in there? Okay. Okay, so, I'm sorry, I thought there was a zoning map in the slide to look at, but in your packet that was distributed, you can tell that all of the land to the west and to the southwest is zoned commercial and different commercial zones. All of the land to the north, the west, and the, I'm sorry, the north, the east, and the southeast is all residential land. So theoretically, this parcel could have gone either way, residential or commercial. Either way, it would have had to have a zone change or a general plan land use map amendment. The applicant, as he just stated here, has chosen to go with the zone, with the zone change. And this is a rendering of what they have in mind of developing in the future. But keep in mind that this application is only for the rezone and not for the development of this, this commercial property. So because this application meets all of the, all of the code requirements, staff is recommending a positive recommendation to the city council to rezone.
Thank you, Ms. Elgin. Any questions for her this evening? Great, we'll open this up to public comment. If you'd like to speak on this item, please come forward.
Hi, Kimberly Panis. I live at twenty-five eighty-three west Marion Drive, directly to the north of affordable property. Ours is one of the many residential properties that abuts affordable's property. And this property, even though it may be zoned this way, is surrounded completely by homes, including the west side. There isn't, I guess it's a rental home, it is on the west side, is one-hundred percent surrounded by homes. And as concerned homeowners, we don't want overtly commercial business in our backyard. Our yard is elevated, so we see down into it. And if they build multiple-story buildings, they will see into our home. We live in a forty-four hundred square foot home. The back of the home is largely covered in glass, so from anywhere in the house, we just see this property. And it is an eyesore. If you can show those pictures. Okay. But anyway, so far, we've had to deal with, we're actually among the residents who have become victims of the previous rezoning for affordable lawn care property, where the city assured us the property would be rezoned as limited commercial use. No future business would be an eyesore or cause excessive noise or light pollution. And someone here told me that in this room. On the contrary, the property is rezoned as commercial general, even though we were statistically told otherwise. Since affordable lawn care has set up business there, the property has taken on the appearance of a storage facility, garbage dump, vehicle and trailer park, now includes a full-height shipping container parked at our fence. Nothing short of a twelve-foot-high concrete wall can conceal it. We're forced to do this on a daily basis since the rear of our house is covered with so much glass. Lights on, the lights from front loaders and fleet of trucks shine on our windows regularly as well as floodlights strike it out of our house that often flash off and on all night long, requiring us to install blackout lines in our bedroom and glass doors. The noise, bobcat front loaders and trucks throw shrill and piercing backup alarms and headlights shining under our windows often run twenty-four hours per day in winter. Lawn equipment is regularly started as early as five-thirty a.m. in the morning. In closing, only one person will benefit from this rezoning property, and it's not the surrounding residents of West Jordan. All the surrounding property owners will suffer loss of their property value. And I would challenge any of these developers or people building businesses next to homes to build it in their own backyard. We can't afford to move where everybody else can, where the developers can. We can't afford to do that. So I hope that you would please vote against this.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak on this item?
Good evening. My name is Mark Panis. I live at twenty-five eighty-three west Marion Drive. And as you can tell, Kimberly Panis is pretty frustrated and angry about this. What she said is absolutely true. I think it was seven or eight years ago when, in the planning council, and then also we went to the city council meeting later on, we were assured that the property that Wayne Mattson had formerly, formerly lived at would not be a general commercial zoning on it. And today, it is exactly that. So I have fear about the adjacent property. I certainly don't have any ill will for Mr. Pulver. He's a nice man. He really is. But what I have concerns about is what somebody previously talked about, I think, in item number one, which is having a two, three, four, or five-story building behind your home that's looking down into your backyard. Do any of you want that? So thinking about what Mr. Pulver's trying to do there, you know, it would seem to me that SC one would fill that too, because when I look in the city's ordinances, that is a, an approved use is an office for that property, if he really wants to build an office there. And I think it's a better choice than, than commercial general, because commercial general has no limitation in height. He could build a ten, twenty-story building there, literally, whereas with SC one, he's limited to thirty-five feet. So he's limited to two stories at least. I think that's more reasonable. Right now, I suspect that even in the staff report, they, they talk about that, that the property right now could be used for any, something other than building the offices on there. And I suspect it will be just an expansion of the, of the lawn care business which is there, which is frankly, at first blush, you would think that a lawn care business is probably pretty inert, but it's not. It's like having a construction yard in your backyard, literally beeping alarms at night. How would you feel if you heard from your house, construction-type equipment running daily? The beep-beep-beep of backup alarms almost an hour to the occurrence? Voices shouting so loud that you hear them from your bedroom? And you know what? These things have happened in the past, well after ten p.m. and well before seven a.m. And that's what we live with every day. And Mr. Pulver has tried to mitigate that, bless his heart, but the reality is that the business drives it. And I think that expanding the zoning is just going to make more commercial business activity there. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Other comments?
My name's Gary Montanez, and I live at seventy-seven sixty-four south Panda Way. And my whole rear lot abuts this property. And starting in August, they started leveling off all that property and laying gravel down. So we started dealing with the noise then. Then we get all the trucks backed into our fence, and then we get all the, his employees backed up against our fence. So we're dealing with the same thing, the sounds. They had a big motor home in there, they got backed into the lot, they had it out in the middle. And now they're going to do this building so that now they can look right into my backyard, my whole backyard. So there's no privacy whatsoever. I mean, the lot was, it was full of weeds before. It was tolerable, as long as they came and mowed them down once in a while. But to have these, these buildings that they're proposing to put back there where they're going to look right down our lots, we have no privacy no more. I've been living there for eighteen years, and then for them to come in and just all of a sudden decide that I'm going to have this type of stuff behind my house, it's a little late in life to be moving. So I'm a little frustrated by it. I'm frustrated by the noises. We get all the same thing that everyone else is talking about. We get everybody out there before seven o'clock in the morning, they're tailboarding, talking, they take off out of there, the dumpsters are banging, the little front-end loaders are going, they got yard equipment going, trying to get their stuff running. It just, it's kind of frustrating as to what, what they're doing right now and, and why they're doing this right now when it's zoned residential, I don't understand. They bought the property, they're using it as commercial now under a residential zoning, which is incorrect in my eyes. I've been down three times to the, and talked to the code enforcement, they've been over there and talked to them, but, you know, nothing gets done. So the other thing is that they're using the other property, and that's, that's fine, the Mattson building, whatever they've done with it. But they also live in the house in front, so they have their music blasting at the middle of the night on the weekends also. So we deal with other people living in a multi-type style house. So that's pretty much all I got to say about it.
Thank you.
My name is Ernest Rudy. I live at seventy-seven fifty-six Panda Way. I just live north of Gary. For the last while, there's been a motor home and a couple of trucks parked up against my part of his property. But after I got the letter for the rezoning, that was all moved over to the other section of their property. When they first bought the property, like Gary said, they were starting construction five o'clock in the morning. I come home from work at three in the morning, I'm supposed to be at work right now, but there's things going on all night and early in the morning when I'm trying to sleep. There's got to be something done for the noise and for the dust. Right now, it's all gravel, and they're using it, like I say, for their lawn mowing, and they do snow removal. So that starts early in the morning. That's going to go on all night long during the winter. I don't agree with the rezoning to commercial. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? We'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission, and we can ask questions of staff too, if anybody has anything that they'd like to clarify.
I'd like the applicant to listen.
Oh, yes, thank you. Thank you, thank you for keeping me straight, Commissioner Green. Let's bring the applicant back up. Is there anything that you would like to address relative to what people have said in the public comment section?
I am sensitive to the neighbors' complaints, and I have met with a few of them and have, last year I put in a fence, an eight-foot fence, masonry wall, that cost me nineteen thousand dollars out of my own pocket, which I was not required to do. I also split the cost of the fence with Mark. He came to me and said they were putting in the fence, and I said willingly that I would split that cost with him. But the lot they're talking about has nothing to do with the lot twenty-five fourteen west, that's a separate lot, just for the record. So as far as twenty-five fourteen west, as far as privacy, I am sensitive to that. I'm more than willing to, to talk about fencing with the neighbors, as I've already done with my other lot, and give them as much privacy as possible and so forth. So I am open to that, as I have been in the previous year. So I realize that it does border residential, but I do still believe the long seven hundred south, it complies with, with the zoning change.
Could you please speak toward the noise ordinance, the times of day, operating outside of seven a.m. to ten p.m.?
Yeah, I believe there's a little drama there, but I operate from seven to about ten p.m. I did have some noise ordinances issues, which I've corrected. I do not low salt in my other lot during certain hours, which I've corrected. So there will be no noise, as has been stated, going on from ten p.m. to, you know, early in the morning. I don't work all hours of the night, and my guys don't either, so that's all I have to say for that.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. So there was some question about zoning, general commercial versus like an SC one or if you're going to build office buildings, P.O., why did you elect to try to zone this as general commercial instead of one of those other zonings?
I had someone look at it, and that's what they recommended, as far as the office planes, how high they were, and they're not high, so.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Green.
No, I was, I'll wait till he's done.
Okay, we're done. Commissioner Luthy, did you have a question for Mr. Pulver?
Yeah, I do. Along those same lines, would you be amenable to changing to...
Along those same lines, would you be amenable to changing to one of those other zones to give the comfort level of that you're going to be building, a lower building, that would conform to one of those zones?
As long as I'm open to it, so, general commercial or CG1 as it's called.
Is that something he could do here? Could he change what he would be wanting to go for?
Yeah, the planning commission could make a recommendation to the council. The SC1, you feel, meets the needs of the community and the general land use map better than the CG. I would hesitate to zone it to CG for one reason. That is, the zone that the general plan requires or is calling for us to eliminate in the city. And so I would propose that it go to SC1, so it's just...
Commissioner Luthy, did you have anything else?
Well, if we're discussing...
Okay, Commissioner Green.
I don't think that we can go SC1. Let me read you the SC1 zoning. Remember, keep in mind, this is .9 acres. The SC1 zone should be located in performance with the city general plan. Each SC1 neighborhood shopping center zone shall contain a minimum of 1 acre and a maximum of 10. It can't be a SC1 zone by ordinance, because it must require 1 acre. So unless there was a subdivision of property someplace with the house next door, we can't approve SC1 zone on something less than 1 acre. So legally, I don't think we can do it. So I went through, I pulled, while the presentation was going on, I pulled this up. SC1 zone, you got to have a minimum of 1 acre, maximum of 10. SC2, you got to have 5 acres, maximum of 25. And SC3 is a minimum of 25 acres. The only zone that, and a CM zone only can, must contain a minimum of 5. So if we're talking about commercial zone on this piece of property, the only thing we can consider is Commercial General.
Or Professional.
Or Professional Office.
That was going to be my next comment.
Commissioner Luthy?
Yeah, if that's out the door...
Sorry, if that's out the door, if, again, if what he's looking for is to put in two office buildings, would Professional Office space meet that need and alleviate the fears of the neighbors around him?
But what's the difference? Offices or offices?
Exactly. So if he's wanting to build two offices to alleviate the fears of the neighbors who now are seeing that there could be a potential height of any order, would it not be just as simple to say, let's zone it to Professional Office, and now that is not a fear?
Do we have any more questions for the applicant, or can we have him sit down? Are we still... Does anybody have a question for the applicant? Okay, I just wanted to make you comfortable, sir. Feel free to have a seat.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, Commissioner Quinney.
I don't think it matters if we do CG or PO. The height on a PO is still going to be higher than what the neighbors are wanting. The point of doing the SC would be to limit the height, right? We don't have that option. So I don't think it matters CG or PO in this case.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. We are trying to eliminate CG in the city, right? So PO is a better option, just for that alone. Plus, I mean, Professional Office kind of implies less of an obtrusive style of business. So, you know, Professional Office limits the height of the building somewhat, whereas the CG can just go and go and go. So, I mean, I think that alleviates some of the problems between what the residents want and if it's, you know, a business that Professional Office also kind of implies more reasonable business hours. So personally, I think a PO zone would be a much better fit for this. Plus, it is bordering 7800 South. I don't want to see residential go in here because it's an arterial route. So I feel like a PO zone would be a better fit.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you. I'm in agreement with that. An office building is one of your better neighbors. They many times don't operate on weekends. They're closed at night. They don't have the amount of equipment, that type of thing. They do make a better neighbor than a Commercial General. And so I would rather see a PO zone there than the Commercial General. Thank you.
Commissioner Green.
I'm going to ask the question, how wide is this lot? Do we know how wide this lot is? I mean, because it's a long, it's a fairly long, skinny lot. Do we know what the width of the lot is? Because if we go, if we go PO, you can still go 40 feet. I'm looking at the PO ordinance right now, and the maximum, the maximum building height is 40 feet. And the maximum building coverage is 50% on the lot, with a minimum rear yard side of 20 feet, corner yard 20, minimum front yard 20, and the minimum lot width has to be 80 feet. So my question is, how wide is this lot? Is it... Anybody got any idea? Can we pull out Google something?
According to the applicant's renderings, it is 144 feet wide.
So it's wide enough to do PO then?
Which, as you mentioned, that still is higher than the residents, their concern is, especially with the glass, the penetration on the back of their house, still looking in.
I guess that, other than the fact that we're talking about eventually eliminating CG from the city ordinance that we haven't done, what, and this is in, the future land use map says that this is commercial. We know that we're never going to put, I'm going to say this out loud, and the residents will throw rocks at me later, I know that we're never going to put residential on that property. I think it's fair to say that at least this commission will never approve residential on that lot. I can sympathize with the residents, because my lot, where I live, is just like this. I have, I have a big lot off of 7800, or I have a big lot that borders me from 7800 South, and it's owned by a local business, and they come in and have started storing their sprinkler pipes on it. I get what, I get where you're going. I understand. But the issue that we have to address tonight is, is this appropriate zoning? And unfortunately, I can't, I'm going to, I can't consider what happens on the other piece of property. He's got a lawn care business, and he's noisy. I empathize with that. I know what it's like to have noisy neighbors. I know what it's like to have trucks going through my backyard dumping off sprinkler pipe at 6:00 in the morning, or them grading the property, or whatever the case may be. I understand that, but what I have to, what we have to look tonight as a commission is the zoning of this particular piece of property and whether the applicant has met the burden of proof to say that this property ought to be commercial. Now, if we decide that it ought to be PO and send them back, what have we accomplished? Because you still got 40, you still got a 40-foot, you can still go 40 feet high. I'm trying to figure out what we would accomplish by making that PO in a commercial zone. So there's where I'm sitting, is that obviously along 7800 South and the arteries, we are expecting, particularly as we drift towards 2700 West, we're looking at commercial property. Right across the street, you know, or just up across the street, we're building the new rental center, whatever that was, that we've approved not too long ago. And it's going in right now. So I empathize with the people, with all of you that live behind this, because, and if you don't like that zoning, the zoning behind me, they can actually go 70 feet high, or something like that. It's crazy. I don't know, that CG zone's got a crazy height limit, or the Community Gateway one had a crazy height limit of something. I don't know what it was. But anyway, I think this is appropriate for commercial. Now, whether it's PO or whether it's CG, I'm still just trying to figure out what the difference, if we're putting offices in there. You look at the uses between SC and CG, a lot of them are identical. Very few of them differ. We look at all the different commercial uses, and we know, I just, I have a hard time thinking that we, that, and if we say that we deny this, the applicant's just going to come back with PO zone and reapply, so.
Could I interject something?
Mr. Gardner.
The applicant's not asked for a Professional Office zone. He hasn't asked to amend the land use map. He wants to zone it to a commercial property. It's a small piece of property, and so there's going to be constraints. When the site plan approval comes back to you, it can require the office building be pulled as close to 7800 South as possible, you know, to mitigate at least the rear and the east side. It doesn't do much for the ones right on 7800 South. But what I say by constraints is, the height of the building's going to be constrained by parking. And already, he's going to be required to put a 20-foot landscape buffer with a masonry wall along the east and the north boundary of the property. So that's going to eat up more real estate, and then there'll be a landscaping requirement along 7800 South. So the, you know, he's not going to be able to put a huge building on this, this property. It's just not going to be physically possible, particularly with parking at the rate of 5,000 square feet, you know? He's just not...
Great, thank you. Commissioner Luthy?
Since I don't have the zoning right in front of me, is there a difference on what can be stored on the site between a Professional Office and the general commercial?
What do you mean?
Well, they, one of their concerns was that he was storing a bunch of equipment on site.
He shouldn't be doing that.
Would he be allowed to do that under either of them? So no matter which one it was zoned as, he couldn't just store any of kind of his equipment on site? Okay.
Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think in light of the current knowledge, where the building is constrained already, that was my big concern, is the size of the building. But where there's the constraints with the parking limit and all of the requirements, I think, you know, a lot of the residents' concerns, other than perhaps being able to look over the fence, will be resolved through this kind of a zoning change. I mean, a lot of the complaint, from what I heard, was noise and, you know, equipment right there. But if a Professional Office or some type of commercial entity goes in there, a lot of that problem's going to go away. And with the equipment, you know, like Commissioner Luthy just said, I feel like a lot of, a lot of the issues are going to be resolved. And, you know, I would love to be able to give all the residents everything they want. However, 7800 South is becoming a major arterial route for West Jordan, and the placement for business should be along arterial routes. And I know that that's not what a lot of you want to hear. However, I feel like the highest and best use for this property is definitely commercial use and not residential. So that's the way I'm going to vote.
Any other discussion or amenable to a motion? Commissioner Green.
I'll do it. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report on the evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a positive recommendation to the city council to rezone 0.90 acres from R110B, single-family residential 10,000-square-foot lots, zone to CG, general commercial zone on property located at 2514 South, 7800 West.
Commissioner Sikoski.
78, 25, I'm sorry, 7800 South. Yeah, we're not that far west.
Yeah, right. Great. Commissioner Sikoski. Second. Motion by Commissioner Green, second by Commissioner Sikoski. Discussion, Commissioner Luthy.
I just have one more question. If the city doesn't want that zone, is there a zone that would be better to recommend? There's not. Okay, that was my only question.
Any other discussion? Voting, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries six to one, with Commissioner Hatch casting the dissenting vote. Which brings us to the last item on our agenda this evening, Bingham Heights Rezone and Land Use Map Amendment, 7300 South, 5600 West. General Plan Land Use Map Amendment for 33.49 acres from low-density residential to medium-density residential and rezone from LSFR, Low Density Single Family Residential Zone, to R18D, Single Family Residential 8,000-square-foot Lots Zone. Perry Land Investments LLC, Dan Reeve is the applicant. Are you here this evening? You're still awake? You're still, you still got, I've got fruit snacks.
I'm good, thanks.
Okay, thank you for your patience. Next time, sign up earlier, is all I can say.
Well, I've had the easy part so far tonight, so I appreciate you and for all you do. It's a thankless job sometimes, but appreciate it. So Dan Reeve with Perry Commercial, sorry, Perry Homes, and our address is 17 East Winchester Street in Murray. Pleasure to be here tonight. I know it's going late. I'll just touch on, we feel this is a good blend to the existing uses in the area, with the R16 to the north, the R110 to the south. We own further land to the west, and then beyond that is the Jensen property that has much higher density there. So we feel it's good sound planning to propose this, and so I'd be happy to entertain any preliminary questions you have.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Reeve? Not right now.
Thank you.
Maybe later. Thank you. We'd like to welcome to the city of West Jordan, Mr. Kent Page, and hope that he doesn't get scared off and reconsider his decision to work for the city. We'd like to assure him that planning commission meetings don't usually last this long. And you have this item this evening.
Well, thank you for having me. It's a pleasure to be here. Yeah, this is located, as you've mentioned, approximately at 7300 South, 5600 West. Looks like the, essentially, utilities, sewer, water, you know, power are all available in this area. It does seem to be a pretty good mix between the higher-density residential and the lower-density residential to the south. However, the general plan, you know, states that low-density residential is the preferred use, but of course, that's always needs to be balanced by affordability and different types of housing products for different age groups and different income levels. So I see this as, yeah, it's a good blend between the higher density to the north and the lower density to the south, but there's relatively few low-residential-density properties still available in the city of West Jordan. There are some across 5600 West, you know, to the east. So it's a question for the city of, you know, which direction they want to go to, but it does seem reasonable that this could be rezoned to the requested R18.
Great, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Page?
Not at this point. If you have any particular questions that are brought up from the staff report, I'd be glad to try to address those.
Thank you. Any questions from the commission or staff? Thank you. We'll open this up to the public. If you'd like to comment on this item, please come forward at this time.
I'm coming up first because I have somewhere else. I was supposed to be at 9:00. And I would like to have some extra time because I am speaking for some other people that could not come tonight. And we have our neighborhood, I live in Sienna Vista, the group that they're calling...
High Density?
Yes. They're calling it High Density. I think that was erroneous. It's a Medium Density, kind of like what they're trying to get for these Perry Homes. I love Perry Homes, I have nothing against Perry Homes. I do have some questions about some of the things that were in some of the statements. There are things that we have issues with. It was on the news, on two different news channels last night, about the vandalism in our own neighborhood, and they're going to be connecting to that. So one of the issues I have is on the map, on the far side next to 5600, that street that goes all the way down through there, is Sorrento in our neighborhood. And Sorrento is the worst problem we have in our neighborhood with vandalism, break-ins in homes, cars, everything. And the thing that was on the news last night was youth throwing rocks into homes. The city has allowed to, and I don't know, I didn't live here when these were actually built, but I've been here 11 years in this home, there are sections that are open that people can... people can walk from 5600, which wasn't open at the time, 5600 is a newer street, they can actually walk through property that was left available and walk right into the neighborhood, steal things, and go back out to 5600 and leave. So it is an issue for that street to go all the way through like that. My proposal would be that they make an L there, like they have a T over on the Montova side. Excuse me. That they make an L there, so it doesn't continue down through, or some kind of roundabout or something that calms the area down and does not allow them to speed through there because now they have another egress at the south end there. Excuse me. So I would like to see, the proposal, the things that have been submitted on page six under engineering, it says there's no traffic study necessary. And I kind of disagree with that. They're going to put traffic out on 5600 West there. The one that is south of there in the new Ivory Homes that are there, it's hard for those people to get out, and they have a wider egress. This just looks like a normal street coming out. And I don't see how people are going to be able to turn there. The police sit out there when that was first open and patrolled it, and people were getting tickets. I mean, it was like five police cars pulling people over because of the way people travel on that street. So that's all I'll say about that. In criteria two on page 10, turn, I'll turn to that, it states that parcel A is talking about it being the retention area. It is a two... Sorry, a half-acre retention area for 122 homes, if I believe I've got my numbers right. It says... Anyway, but what I'm concerned about is that there is, in paragraph three, they're talking about the retention. It's only a half acre, and the homes that were just proposed on that other one that was agreed with is a two acre for 95 homes. I think something needs to be done there. While I've lived there, we've had problems where the city, I feel, did not address the water that comes down through these sloping areas, and it needs to be addressed. We have actually had people whose all of their rock in their yard has come down the street and turned the corner where I live and come down in our street. We've had to physically pick it up and help them take it back to their yard. And I mean all of the rock. So it concerns me that they're going to have a retention area down at this lower end near the new Ivory Homes, and you're going to have a problem. You're going to have a problem. It has to be addressed. Then also, they talk about in findings B on page five, if maintaining the general plan, low-density should remain. And so I don't know that it has to be low-density, but I think that Perry Homes needs to work with the community and determine, for example, they've got larger homes right here for a few that may up to Ivory, and then all these others are the same size that I live in. I just think that there needs to be a better use of that. So those are the things that I'm addressing. And I say to Perry Homes, your motto is location, value, and quality, and I ask that you add community to that and just work with the community. I have no problem with this. I have a problem with how it's kind of laid out. So that's all I'm saying.
Could we please...
And I didn't tell you who it was. I'm sorry, Marie Godfrey, and I live at 7127 Comalane.
Thank you, Ms. Godfrey.
My name is Jordan Douglas. I live on 7483 South, 5680 West, where this would potentially connect to. I have just three concerns. One is just the fact that we were excited about this area being low-density housing. We were in the Ivory neighborhood to the south. To the north, it was supposed to be low-density housing as well. We were excited about that in terms of the value of our home and feel that if it's changed to medium or high-density, that that would negatively affect the value of our property. Second concern would be in regards to traffic. With this being proposed this way, there is continuous flow or the ability for cars to travel almost from 6200 South all the way through my neighborhood to Smith's without having to use 5600 West. I think that, you know, as there's been concerns that's been brought up, the more people that are going through, the more issues. I also have small kids. I live right on that road that's going to potentially connect to Smith's. I know on my little street of like seven houses, there's like eight small children. So I have concerns with what this plan will do for the traffic, as well as the fact that if we're moving to medium-density housing, there's going to be more homes, more cars, more traffic. Lastly, I feel that the high-density housing is already all around us. To the south of the Ivory neighborhood, I think is known for high-density. South of 78, there's a bunch of high-density. I believe to the west of us, that copper room is supposed to be high-density. And as we mentioned, there should be a balance between the low and high-density. I feel like that balance is being compromised by turning this from low-density to medium-density housing. That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Douglas.
My name is Brad Nelson, and my wife and I, we live at 5622 West, 7380 South. And my home would be directly adjacent to the retention pond, parcel A. So I was going to be, my question is, what's parcel A? It's already been answered. And I do have a number of neighbors who've asked me to bring questions too, so I'll try and get through these quickly. So the parcel A part is, I'm very concerned about the drainage. You can see how the terrain slopes down, and I don't want the retention pond being there too small to obviously become my backyard as well. And the way it slopes, it runs right down into the corner and then would run down from north to south along the wall, the masonry wall that Ivory Homes put in. So that's a big concern. Secondly, the wall, okay? Ivory Homes has not finished subdivision, in my opinion. They built the wall along 5600 West, and the entrance is on 74 South, and then on the south end of the subdivision, there's a wall all the way up. And where the wall ends, it's definitely looking for the next part of the Legos to go in there. And Ivory Homes, I've asked four or five people, say they're not going to build a wall. So that leaves this open space with mismatching backyards and drainage problems. So I would suggest that we, you know, knock on wood with Ivory Homes, have them finish the subdivision or something, so we don't have a mismatch and a security problem that was already addressed. People being... Right now, people can walk right off the street into my backyard. I'm patient because I know that's going to be developed, but I don't want it to get developed and still have that problem. The concern about drains, we've talked about, the traffic flow, at least four different roads are going to run right into our subdivision. So the traffic pattern that's designed now encourages people to egress and ingress through my neighborhood out. And that's about 200 more cars added to the mix at least. So I like, you know, the problem with Perry Homes and the Ivory Homes. We were attracted to the low-density neighborhood. This is our 18th move, retired from the military. I don't want to move again. This is our dream home. And have it kind of corrupted by somebody trying to pack in 150 houses where there was, you know, into sole space and run all the traffic out through my neighborhood is not exactly our idea of the ideal situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson, and thank you for your military service.
David Barber, 7411 South, 5490 West. I live directly east of this proposed development, or actually, the Ivory Summer Glen Development. And I'm very impressed with what they have been doing over there with Ivory. I've been watching it, because this is right out my front door, basically. And I was hoping that the same thing would be continued going north, and obviously, this is not the case. So the only thing I'd like to say is, let's go to the lower density on this and stay with what Ivory's been doing out there, and they're doing a super job. Everybody that lives out there, we were rural. I've been here for 35 years, and, you know, we've seen them come to us. And we like the low-density, and Ivory's done a good job, and I think they ought to be the example out there and continue going north to the existing division up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Barber. Anyone else this evening? All right, we'll close the public comment section and ask the applicant if you'd like to address anything that's been brought up.
Yes, thank you. And I do appreciate all the public input. We certainly do like to develop good communities, and this is helpful feedback. I think a lot of these certainly would be addressed at the plating stage, preliminary plat stage. I'll just address a few of the points, if I may. Regarding access, for example, the four access points to the south, those are obviously existing access points that we need to connect to. And the other access points off of 56 West, or the... We did have two access points, but based on the slope of 56 West, it was recommended we just have one, and that was the location recommended by engineering, but we are certainly open to where that access point is. And again, that would be more of a preliminary plat issue. And certainly, retention and drainage will be dictated by engineering at preliminary plat as well. And as a home builder, we are more than sensitive to that. We do not want those kind of problems either. So we are... We take good measures and care in regards to that. Regarding the... There's a lot of discussion about the density. As you can see, the concept plan we've submitted tries to buffer the R110 to the south with the larger 10,000-square-foot-plus lots. And then we feather up to the R18, which is not as dense as the R16 to the north. So we understand that concern. We've tried to buffer those to the south based on that approach. Just going through some notes here. There was some comments regarding security with the open field next to these neighborhoods. Obviously, developing this, our property should minimize accessibility directly in other people's backyards. Hopefully, that helps minimize that concern. If there are any other questions I can answer from the commission, happy to do so.
Any additional questions for the applicant, Mr. Reeve? All right, that's it. Thank you. Let's bring it back to the commission for discussion. Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I live out in this area. I live in medium-density. Most of the subdivisions around me are medium-density, some high-density. We have very few low-density areas. This one's kind of a conundrum to me, though, being right along 5600 West. That area is developing out, you know, quite a bit. I know some of the things we've approved along Mountain View Corridor and some of those other areas in the last six months have all been medium-density. I do have a fear that we're just passing medium-density, because that's what developers want to build, but I do worry that we're not preserving enough space over there to have some lower-density develop out. And I know that builders, you know, it's got a pencil, it's got to make sense, and you've got to make enough money on the area to make it work. But I do have concerns that the west side of West Jordan is going to become medium-density bill. And I think we also have a responsibility to make sure that there's a variety of development, not just medium-density, that we have some low-density, that we have, you know, we've got a lot of high-density, too. I like the concept. I think we're not looking at the concept tonight, we're looking at the zoning change. However, I just worry that by continuing that medium-density, we're going to run into problems.
Commissioner Luthy.
Thank you. I actually agree with probably 99% of what he just said, which is rare, right? I agree. I think that I like the plan of going from the matching on the one side to the other. And if this was a matter of approving a site plan and the zoning was already approved, there's a lot of here that I really like. But I do not think West Jordan has enough low-density, and I feel very strongly that, especially in an area like this, that has so much growth around it, it would be a mistake to get rid of that low-density zone.
Commissioner Green.
So, actually, partially, to be clear, the Ivory Homes neighborhood is actually a medium-density neighborhood at R110. So, that being said, and I know we're not talking about concept plan, but this is a good visual, this is too dense for me. I agree with Commissioner Luthy and I agree with Commissioner Sikoski that we need to preserve some low-density property. I might even stretch medium if we were talking about R110. But if we're talking R18 here, and I agree with Commissioner Sikoski, and the thing is, is that we continue to get what we've always got, that whole saying, and I have to tell you, when we look, when we hear about commercial development coming into the city, and everybody says, "Commercial development's dead," and all this other stuff, I sometimes wonder if they say that because they say, "Well, it's because you have..." And I would... I have to tell you, I think we've got some of the most, and I... homogeneous-type population of any city in the valley. We don't have enough different types of housing to drive the economic development that we really ought to be seeing on the west side, out by Smith's, that we see that's going on in Draper and Lehigh and South Jordan, and you can see where I'm going with that. You know, you go to all those cities, even Taylorsville, we're building all these restaurants and commercial stuff and all these other things, and developers come and tell us in West Jordan City, "Sorry, we can't build commercial in West Jordan." Well, why is that? And I think part of it is because we don't have the low-density housing and all the other stuff that comes with that. Would I... If this was an R110, I might think about voting yes for it. But I have to tell you, the fact that the R16 is on the corner means nothing to me because I'm not... I don't want to perpetuate the mistakes of the past. I think the city previously has overbuilt some of this high-density stuff to the point where it's hurt the city, you know? We know what the projections are, even with the cap and grade, that we'll never catch up with that until, you know, 25 years from now, whatever's 2030 or whatever. So I'm not going to perpetuate the mistake of the past. And last but not least, and it's the one thing that always comes back to me, is when we make a general land use map amendment and a zoning change, there has to be a preponderance of the evidence to prove that the... And there's a burden of proof on the developer who's got to come in and show that the land needs to be rezoned. And I think we saw that in the last action. It was R1-whatever-it-was sitting on 7800 South, and that rezon makes sense. To me, this rezon doesn't make sense. And I don't think that the evidence and the burden of proof has been met yet to rezon this from low-density. And maybe there's a better way to do it, but from my opinion, I don't think we've met that burden.
Commissioner Hanson.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm in agreement with Commissioner Green in that we are not providing, we are only continuing with the same route. The small lots jam in as many houses as we can. I have concern that detention pond is not nearly enough to take care of this many houses, 122 houses, and it's going to flow into the Ivory or into this gentleman's backyard that he talked about. We have such an opportunity here in this city because we're one of the few cities that have this kind of ground. that have this kind of ground that we still can develop. And if we want economic development here in this city, we want to be able to provide the kind of housing the people that work in this economic development portion want to live in. We don't. They move south, or they move to Draper. They don't stay here. And I think that, as an ex-planner, I worked with Perry. He didn't build 8,000-square-foot homes in South Jordan, 8,000-square-foot lots. He built third-acre lots down there and sold them all. And I would like to see them look forward to doing something similar here. I think that our city deserves that. We don't have the reputation that we deserve to have. I believe the mayor said we were second on the list for being the worst city. There was only one less than ours. And I, I think that, that we need to work hard to improve our city and make it a place where people do want to bring their development and they do want to live. A city where you don't have to leave to find the development we need. A city where everything is available to you, as well as the housing you want to live in. So I, I think this is far too dense. Thank you.
Thank you. And just to ensure we don't forget to verify what the applicant said when he came up to address the questions in the public comment section. Mr. Nelson, if you could verify that the traffic flow and the drainage, all of that would be, would be definitely scrutinized at the plating stage.
I'd just like to talk about both of those for a second. First of all, the, the traffic flow. I'm not certain if that was an accurate statement in the staff report that said a traffic impact study would not be required. I don't recall the traffic engineer saying that specifically. We did discuss the location of the point of access on 5600 West and that it, that it, there would only be one. But I'd have to go back and check with him if that's what he meant. But normally, he does require a traffic study if a development produces more than 100 peak-hour trips, and a, a site this big would do that, I think. So I, I can pretty much be assured that a traffic study would be required. As far as the, the detention pond, that hasn't been designed yet. The final location hasn't been determined yet either. This is something that would be addressed during design. It may be, it may very well be that this would need more than one detention pond. A number of subdivisions of this size are that way. And I see a number of long dead-end roads, the, the dead-end towards the south, as I, I believe they slope downwards. And so, you know, those roads would, would have, you know, there'd be, the, the drainage would collect at the end of those roads, or else it'd be allowed to run onto the Ivory project, which would not work for us. So I, I can see some design work that needs to be done as far as the drainage goes.
Thank you. Any further discussion, any motion that wants to be tendered? Commissioner Sikoski.
Thank you. I, I will go ahead and make a motion. Let's see here. Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to city council regarding the application to amend the future land use map for 33.49 acres from low-density residential to medium-density residential on the property located at 7300 South, 5600 West. And I do that because I don't feel that finding D has been met, that the proposed amendment constitutes an overall improvement to the adopted general land use map and is not solely for the good or benefit of a particular person or entity in this. I kind of feel that the benefit would strictly be for Perry Homes.
Yeah. Thank you. Commissioner Green.
I will second that.
A motion by Commissioner Sikoski, a second by Commissioner Green. Do we have discussion? Commissioner Quinney?
Yeah, I don't know if it's, I don't know if it's necessarily a discussion regarding the motion, because I wanted to make, make a comment before. I, I agree with what's been said, however, I don't know how we fit anything different in here. I think this is a good fit. I'm, I'm, I'm against our negative recommendation, just making that statement.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Commissioner Hatch.
I would have to be with Commissioner Quinney on this. I'm against it as well. I believe we have to provide affordable housing, and medium-density, to me, works really well.
Other discussion to the motion. Commissioner Luthy.
I completely agree, other than I agree we already have enough of that.
Final call for discussion to the motion? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries five to two with Commissioners Quinney and Hatch casting the dissenting votes, which brings us to the conclusion of our agenda.
We have another motion on here.
Oh, we do? Thank you. See, you guys are always so good to me. Thank you for keeping me on track. Commissioner Sikoski.
Based on the information and findings set forth in the staff report and upon evidence and explanations received today, I move that the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to city council regarding the application to rezone 33.49 acres from LSFR, low-density, single-family residential, to R-18D zone on property located at 7300 South, 5600 West, with the same reasoning as the previous motion.
Commissioner Green.
Second.
A motion by Commissioner Sikoski, a second by Commissioner Green, with discussion, starting with Commissioner Quinney.
You just, you're just a microphone hog. I, I just want to just say again, I, I agree with the conversation. I think that we need more low, low-density, but we can't keep overlooking everything else that comes in front of us just in favor of low-density, which is why I think that this is a good fit, right where it's at. It's a good bridge from what's to the south to the north. I think this is a great fit for this.
Thank you. Commissioner Sikoski.
I would agree, except that there's very few areas out to the west there that are still zoned low-density, and where this is already zoned low-density, to give up this space in, in lieu of making it medium-density, I think isn't a good fit. Where, you know, one of the things that we have to look at is, are there any other places within the city that this development could go that would make more sense? And I feel that there are, there are plenty of other areas that would make more sense that, that aren't already zoned low-density. So my, my motive on this is just to preserve what's already there.
Commissioner Luthy.
I agree. I also want to say that there's a little bit farther to the west, more low-density, and if we take this and we make this medium-density, what's to say that now the argument on the next one is not, "Well, this is now medium-density, and this is medium-density, we need to change this one, too." And all of a sudden, everything that surrounds it has the same argument. "Well, everything around it now is medium, so we have to bring it down." I feel like you have to draw the line somewhere, and this is already zoned, it's already in the future land map for this. I, I don't think it's a good call to change it.
Any other discussion to the motion? See, none? Let's vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Yea.
Motion carries five to two with Commissioners Quinney and Hatch casting the dissenting votes. And now that takes us to the end of the official agenda, except for the general plan.
No, no, no. I need, need a, yes, parcel of general.
So we need a general plan designate. The problem is, we don't know the day or time that the meetings are going to be held. So what is a deadline by which you need us to designate someone?
9:52 tonight. I think that, by the next meeting.
By the next meeting, could we please get more information on what day of the week, what time it would start? We know it'll be approximately quarterly at this point, but, correct me if I'm wrong, but would, would that be a major consideration for anyone applying?
I volunteer.
You volunteer either way.
I'm very interested, but I would need to know the date to make sure that I could make sure it worked.
Every, every meeting, ribs, get you there.
Refreshments, all the work.
So let's continue the conversation, though, because can we appoint more than one?
No, just one.
We just need one as a.
One from the planning commission and one from the board of adjustment.
And what is the, what is the exact title? Is it, is it a liaison?
A general planning committee.
So there'll be a bona fide, full-fledged, full-fledged voting member of the general plan? Because I just know when I served on it, they, the planning commission liaison and the city council liaison weren't voting members, but they were there to help give feedback or?
I'll, I'll get you more information.
Okay. But Commissioners Green and Luthy are interested? Anyone else?
I'm not currently on any other committee, so I don't know if that plays a role in it.
Great. Would, should we designate someone this evening, or shall we wait until next meeting? Which is three weeks. That's three weeks, just a reminder, right?
Let's do it at the pre-meeting, next meeting.
Because we meet on the 14th. We skip the first week of the month.
Then we can get, then we can get a time and date. Commissioner Luthy can see. If Commissioner Luthy can't do it, then it's decided, so.
Okay. So we will wait on that until the 14th in the pre-meeting? Does that work?
Motion adjourned.
We're adjourned.
Go team. I think that, to date, was the longest planning commission meeting I've seen.
Yes, so 5:30 to 10.